This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I call to order the meeting of the Escalon Planning Commission for November 9th, 2021. Will you all join me in a flag solo, please?
We're just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which ascends, one nation, our God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
And can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Ingle?
Here.
Castellanos?
Here.
Sarkozy?
Here.
Vice Chair Strowman?
Here.
Chair Willis?
Here. At this time, I'd like to remind people to turn their cellphones off, pagers, similar devices, they need to be on silent or vibrate, if not turned off unless you are an on-duty emergency responder. And we have the option of being attended online. We've got a couple of people online. And the first thing in the consent calendar is to approve the minutes from the meeting of October 12th. Are there any questions or corrections, or is there a motion?
You'd have one item, let me remember. There it was.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Okay, Steve, is there a second?
A second.
Mark, thank you. It has been, the motion has been made and seconded. Are those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are accepted, accepted, excuse me, approved. We have a public hearing to consider the following. Ordinance Amendment 21/757, Consider Recommendations to the Escalon City Council Regarding Amendments to the Escalon Municipal Code, Chapter 17.41.195, Temporary Structures Other Than Construction Buildings, Chapter 17.81.210 T Definitions, 17.12.010 Accessory Buildings, 17.11 List of Permitted Uses, and 17.43 Parking. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, before us tonight, several sections of the municipal code are being opened for review and open to possible amendments. This section is 1741195, which is in regards to residential temporary structures other than construction buildings. And some background on why this section is coming back up before us tonight, you may remember in 2019, the city received an application for a conditional use permit in variance for a 500-square-foot metal carport to be located on a residential side yard on Genevieve Drive. The Planning Commission reviewed the application in accordance with the Escalon Municipal Code and denied the application. The applicant appealed the denial to the city council, who overturned Planning Commission's decision and approved the application. And at that time, the Escalon City Council directed staff to bring amendments forth in the municipal code that would allow for those types of structures. At the September 2020 Planning Commission meeting, staff presented draft red lines of these amendments, and Planning Commission deliberated on each section, agreed upon additional edits, and approved their recommendations to be shared with city council. City council then reviewed those recommendations on the municipal code amendments, approved the changes, and the ordinance became effective November 2020. More recently, September 2021, the city received a code enforcement complaint about an unpermitted accessory structure on the side yard of a house on Jonathan Court. Staff followed up on the complaint, confirmed that the structure was not permitted, and it did not meet municipal code requirements. As process, a code enforcement notice was sent to the property owner, listing their options for correcting the violations. Property owner contacted city staff to discuss the notice and the options, and advised that they would apply for a variance for the structure. The property owner also reached out to city council, asking for assistance on his case, and proposed to the council that the municipal code be amended to allow for that type of structure. Mayor Alves and Mayor Protem Legero requested the interim city manager add an item on the council agenda to discuss the carports and similar temporary structures. The discussion happened at the September 20th city council meeting, where it was the consensus of the council that code enforcement proceedings be paused temporarily until this ordinance could be looked at and possibly amended. Staff advised council, there's a process involved. This is Title 17, which goes to Planning Commission first, and then city council after. So per council's request, staff's opening these sections of the municipal code that could possibly deal with temporary metal carport structures, and there's several of them that could be amended. So we just, we opened them all. The below sections of the staff report is the municipal code as it's currently written and adopted, and then there's staff notes that are italicized and underlined, and these notes include Planning Commission's original comments when these sections of the codes were adopted, as well as city council members' comments after the September 20th city council meeting. So we're opening up the T Definitions section, depending on what changes Planning Commission may recommend tonight, the definition may need to change, so that's open. 171210, Accessory Buildings, this was our original accessory structure municipal code requirement, so this included all types of residential accessory structures, not just the metal carports, garages, carports, studios, greenhouses, rec rooms, patio covers. Before those changes were made in 2020, this is how all accessory structures were regulated. And this is where we had said originally in 2019, those metal carports are not allowed, they don't meet this section of the code. So then we created that other section of the code. For planning staff, not so much current planning staff, because we know the history of these metal carports, and if someone asks, we know where to look for those regulations. But for future planning staff, who may not be aware, if they look up accessory structures, they're going to see this. And they might not know that there is a separate section in the municipal code, because it's a thick book. They might not know there's a separate section for specifically metal carports. So at the bottom of this staff note, we do recommend adding an extra letter here that clarifies, if you're looking at metal carport temporary structures, go check out this other section of the code, just so that they're linked and it doesn't get missed. And then Chapter 1741195, this is the ordinance that was added in 2020 for temporary structures other than construction buildings. This is specifically listing regulations for the prefabricated metal or steel structures, carports, that residences are putting in their front, side, rear yard for boats, RVs, cars, those sorts of things. My recommendation, to make this most clear tonight, is that the Planning Committee, that we go over them one by one, section by section, and really clarify whether Planning Commission likes that it is, as it is, has recommendations for changes. I think it'll be more streamlined if we just go line by line versus jumping from to the front to the end and back and forth. So we'll do that when we have discussion. So this is organized, that it is the ordinance, staff notes are in there with previous comments and more current comments. So we'll go over all of those. And then when we get done with residential accessory structures, the cities received an increased interest in these metal carport structures, not the same as the residential, but the larger parking lot structures. Commercial businesses are wanting to put solar on them, most typically, and our code is not clear on how to handle these. So when we look at our list of permitted uses, listed under residential use are accessory buildings, which these parking lot structures would be considered an accessory building. And you can see in the commercial, C1, C2, M1, M2, they say not permitted. When you go into the other category, they have parking structures or facilities, in which case, in the commercial industrial zone, those structures are conditional use permits. However, parking structures, we don't have a definition in our code what a parking structure is, but when researching other cities' codes, they typically refer to parking garages, multi-story, multi-level parking garage, not a shade structure or a canopy structure in a commercial parking lot. So it's unclear whether this conditional use permit applies to a commercial canopy to put solar on, or whether it's a substantial structure like a parking garage. So staff would like amendments to happen to the code to make this topic more clear, because like I said, we are receiving multiple requests for these. So we're looking for direction on design standards, whether Planning Commission wants to review these as use permits, whether they want to set design standards, and then city staff evaluate them before the building permit is issued. Not looking for changes specific today, but just some guidance on what Planning Commission is looking for with these structures. And then at the next meeting, we can bring back draft red lines to the ordinance for further discussion, public hearing, and recommendation to city council. So we can talk about the commercial carports after that. I think that was the end. So we'll go back up to temporary structures, and I think we just take it section by section and see what amendments Planning Commission thinks is necessary. So temporary structures, we had kind of defined them as the prefabricated metal or steel structures, carports only permitted in residential zoning districts, so they would not be allowed in the commercial, commercial zone. Obtain a building permit if the structure is over 120 square feet. This is required in the building code, so there really isn't any wiggle room on that for amendments.
I do have a question on the first one. Is the 120 square feet defined by footprint or roof print?
Or footage, so it must be.
I would say footprint.
So that would allow for something that's 120 square feet, but could be larger because of an overhang?
If it meets the setback requirements, it would be fine, and the setbacks are based off the walls, and so then your roofs could come in at approximately three feet. So you have about an 18-inch to two-foot.
And I don't know that this section of the code talks about eaves. Typically, these metal structures end, or they wrap around down the sides, but I have seen some, not that people have put in in town, but there are options available to have eaves. So that might be something that gets clarified through these amendments, whether the eaves have to meet the setbacks, or whether it's the posts.
I have a question. We're using the term temporary structures. Does that mean that the structure is not going to be affixed to the ground, like bolted in?
They do have to be bolted. The structures do have to be bolted. I guess temporary in that they can be unbolted and deconstructed and moved.
From a planner's perspective, temporary for us is more a time limit, but a lot of people's argument for these types of structures is that they're temporary in the aspect, that they're not cemented into the ground in most cases. They just bolt them down, and many of them have said, and if I move, I'm going to take it with me. And so in their minds, they see it as a more temporary structure, because it's somewhat easy to put up and take down.
And how many times do you see them when they move, take them with them?
Number two, going off of what Castellanos said, secure the structure to the ground in accordance with the California Building Code. This is the language in the current municipal code. We had our building official, Mike Brinkman, review these sections of the code and provide any updates that he felt would be necessary. And he noted that this language should be changed to secure structure to the ground in accordance with the manufacturer's engineering specifications of the structure, because these units are engineered by the companies, and so they specify what your, how your bolting should be. And then when they go through plan check, they go off of the building, the plan checker goes off of that schedule. So that language should be updated.
Staff, are we allowed to comment as you go through?
Yes, please do. That would be best.
I definitely agree with number two and the staff notes, because saying secure structure to the ground in accordance with the California Building Code, somebody could say, well, I'm just going to nail it to the ground. You have this major carport, whereas the manufacturer may require a certain size anchor bolt, and a certain spacing of the anchor bolts, et cetera, et cetera, and all of that information. That burden should be on the manufacturer, not on the city staff when they submit it for a building permit.
Yeah, I agree with that. There needs to be an engineering attachment to the ground, but what's stopping somebody from building their own and going to a structural engineer and getting those calculations?
And they can do that as well. We have had people inquire about these structures. They don't want to go to the companies that are out there and buy a pre-built one. They want to go have it custom-made for their size and their space. And as long as they meet the code requirements as far as setbacks and what it looks like, we allow them to do that. But they do have to have their own engineering done to make sure that it's installed properly.
It just seems to me like, like going back to number one, it kind of sounds like it's, we say such as prefabricated metal, et cetera, et cetera. It sounds to me like it's only prefabricated, as opposed to something you can build yourself.
Prefabricated or custom?
Yeah.
Or just such as metal or steel structures?
What if they decided to make it out of wood?
I think if it was made out of wood, it probably would need to go under the other section, just accessory structures.
But it's temporary.
Yeah, what if it's temporary?
What makes it temporary?
If they're going to pick it up and take it with them.
Yeah. If it's wood, would it be like Simpson tied into the ground?
Yeah, it could be.
It could be.
Yeah, I wouldn't think that the material would dictate if it's temporary or not.
My thinking, if it's bolted to the ground, you know, I'm an appraiser by profession, that then becomes real estate, not real property. Well, that's, I'm just.
Mike, do you have any opinion or comments from the building code side, whether these structures would be considered temporary?
On the building code side, the structure is a structure, whether it's made out of metal, wood, custom brick, whatever, it's still a structure. As far as temporary, the building code, that's more of a timeline. Usually, it's a 90-day, kind of defines what is temporary, you know, a circus tent, or some type of outdoor venue type of situation. So yeah, the term temporary seems a bit misleading, as far as qualifying something that, you know, anything can be, anything that could be taken down, I mean, it's been installed, it obviously could be taken down, but one of the commissioners mentioned, how often do you see that happen? That's very rare.
So what if we change the title of this chapter from temporary structures to carport structures?
Or just structures, structures other than construction buildings.
And maybe in, maybe in accessory buildings, 1712, we pull out carports. So accessory buildings is for garages, because people do build detached garages or attached garages. So maybe accessory buildings is for garages, studios, greenhouses, rec rooms, patios. If you're building a carport, you need to follow this other section of the code, and it doesn't matter if it's a metal carport, a wooden carport.
I think that's more clear.
Well, what would define that? What would be the difference then if it were to be called a patio cover or a breezeway, and I just decided to park my car underneath it?
A carport is defined as open on two sides in the code. So that would prevent some of those larger RV structures that are being closed on three sides to qualify as an accessory structure.
Yeah, a lot of the ones I see are open in the front and back, and then the sides come down a third of the way or so.
Define open.
Yeah, I think the term temporary structures is what really is throwing people off, because some of these are five, 10 years. That's not temporary.
So Mike, there is a definition in the building code for a carport that we could reference for zoning?
Yes, there is.
And a carport is synonymous with an RV cover.
Would that definition for carport include the very tall ones for RVs?
I don't think it gives a height limit. That would fall under the municipal code as far as what's allowed for height.
Zoning, yes, zoning could limit the height.
Why don't we make a note and call it carport structures, carport structures/RV covers, and other than construction buildings?
Carport/RV structures other than construction buildings.
Boat covers, because that would be a big loophole. Somebody says, why, I own a boat, I don't own an RV. Well, we need to include boats as well.
Back to B, what Sean pointed out, my next-door neighbor has got a wooden structure, was built when the house was built, and painted to match and all that, and it's not going anywhere. Whereas around the corner, the metal carport could have easily been severed from the drive and taken, but they didn't take it, they left it behind. So including wooden.
Temporary structures, not temporary structures.
Not just prefabricated, but custom.
Could you use the word removable?
Well, I think removable is very subjective.
I think they were saying everything is removable.
Give me a sawzall, I can make anything removable.
Structures such as, structures such as.
Don't even include, I would strike the entire such as. So call it carport structures, RV.
Carport, RV, boat.
A carport or other vehicle covers something.
So, and what defines vehicle? Does it have to have a motor?
Yes.
Then RVs wouldn't be applied to that, because some RVs don't have motors.
Okay, good point.
We follow with our 10.12 regarding 72-hour notice and on-street parking, we call them recreational vehicles and vessels.
There you go.
Yeah. There you go.
Car, RV, vessel, ever structures are only permitted in residential districts.
In the dictionary, carport is defined as an open-sided shelter for an automotive vehicle. So the word shelter could be used.
Shelter, that's good. Car, RV, or vessel shelter structure are only permitted in residential zoning districts under the following conditions. And then that covers all types, all materials.
You're not adding in wood, you're leaving metal, steel.
No, we're striking that entire thing. What it's made from doesn't really matter.
It would be up here on Chapter 1741195, removing temporary structures, carport, RV, boat, shelter structures. And then on B, removing temporary structures such as prefabricated metal or steel structures or carports, and doing car, RV, vessel, shelter structures are only permitted in residential zoning districts.
Carport.
Carport. Is everyone good on that?
It sounds kind of polluted, but we'll get a chance to look at it again, or what's, what we say tonight is it, or?
Your recommendations tonight will be put into a redline version of the ordinance and sent to council as Planning Commission recommendation.
Probably splitting hairs, but I would say shelters slash structures.
Slash structures. Can do that?
Or I was thinking, like, structures used as, I don't know, structures with the purpose of sheltering, or something like that.
Structures used to shelter cars, RVs, and vessels?
Yes, structures used to shelter cars, RVs, and other vessels, used as shelters, shelter, used to shelter, used as shelters.
Cars, RVs.
Diana, don't use the word cars specifically, because if I have a truck, then I'm exempt. I would refer to it.
Vehicles?
Vehicles.
Vehicles and vessels.
Vehicles, RVs, and vessels.
Yeah.
Okay.
Structures used to shelter vehicles, vessels, and RVs. Yeah. Does that, how does that sound to you guys? Structures used to shelter, et cetera? Does that cover it?
Yeah. Okay.
So a camper shell, or a camper is not a vessel.
It's an RV.
Is it an RV?
It is.
There's an RV.
Trailers, are you thinking like a trailer?
Well, trailer you pull.
Yeah.
This thing you stick on the bed or the track.
So then, for the title, are you going to have, I guess you'll have to have that whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay. But I think that does cover it.
If they take the camper off the truck and set it on the ground, you shouldn't see it over the.
Yeah, I know, but you might have a.
But they might put a shelter for it.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that brings up a good point. We're saying all these things, it could be, but what if someone wants to put something up and it's just a structure? I mean, do we really care what goes underneath it? Or is it just, we're, we care about it, that it's, meets the building code, it meets the setbacks, whatever they are? Do we care?
I guess if the, if the question came into the planning department, we would relate it to the closest thing available. So if somebody says, I want to put up a shelter, or I want to put up a carport to put my camper under, we would say, well, it's the same type of shelter that is for RVs, vessels, and vehicles. So this is the section you have to adhere to. So if it's not specifically listed in the code, we relate it to the closest thing available. Okay, so we did number two. Three, structure must be independent, cannot be attached to the dwelling, other structures, or fencing. So as I mentioned before, Chapter 1712, accessory structures, that was our original code that we would compare everything to, even the metal carports. And then when this separate temporary structure section was created, adding the language about being independent, cannot be attached, was to really clarify the difference between the accessory structures, which you can attach, you can attach a patio to your house, you can attach a garage to your house, and then these metal carports, which could not be attached to the house and could not be attached to the fence. A council member expressed a desire to remove this section and allow attachment, and the building official noted that the carport structures, anything can be attached if you get it engineered correctly. So it is possible, if Planning Commission wants to allow attachment of these structures to the house, that's fine. The applicant for the project would have to get their own independent engineering for. The applicant for the project would have to get their own independent engineering for how to attach it to their house. And then apart, the section about attaching it to the fencing, that will tie in with setbacks because if you have a setbacks off the side property line, they can't attach it to the fence. So these two will kind of be tied together.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend striking, being, being okay to attach to a house with, with an engineer's design and approval of fire department review.
It must provide calculations stamped by a licensed California structural engineer.
Is there consensus that it's okay to attach to the house as long as you have it engineered, stamped?
Let me ask the definition of attached, that this house on, what is it, Genovese, where the RV cover, it looks like it is attached to the roof of a garage or is it just a drain off into the gutter?
Yeah, that one is not attached. When they attach it, Mike, you might be able to chime in, but what, from what I've seen, not with these car structures, I've never seen it, but like with patio structures, when you attach to the house, you cut through the siding or the stucco and find a, and they install a header beam, and then they have to go back and patch things up afterwards. It's a very permanent type of attachment.
Okay.
Yes, definitely. Permanent.
I think now that we've removed the word temporary, I think it's okay that it can be attached, but I mean, you're definitely gonna have to do your due diligence if you're gonna attach it to the side of your house. And what Commissioner Sarkozy noted was super, super critical related to the fire code. You definitely don't want to allow for something to be attached and then, God forbid, to refire and now not only, now you're putting a burden of fighting the fire for the carport shelter slash structure and the dwelling at the same time.
Okay, so we'll make amendments. You may attach to the house with engineering and fire department approval.
And must meet current fire codes.
Well, wouldn't that, wouldn't that be covered? I mean, the fire department's not gonna approve it if it doesn't, I wouldn't think.
Planning, that makes sense.
Just for clarification, this is Mike. The fire code is more of a maintenance code, whereas the building code is the construction and design code to follow. So for instance, you build these structures, you park your RV next to your house, you're possibly blocking bedroom required egress windows or fire personnel as well as getting someone out of the house. So it may come down to a case by case, without to see the layout of the house, see what is actually being blocked by this structure.
Strike the fire code and just say upon fire department approval.
On fire department approval.
And engineer, city engineer approval or?
Uh, they would have to have, they would have to hire their own engineer to engineer how to attach it to the house.
Okay. And who's gonna review that and approve it?
The building department.
Okay.
Best part is when two structural engineers get into an argument.
Well then, should it say, it's subject to the building official and fire department approval?
We can do that.
Well, if it.
And these structures would get a building permit, so they would automatically, they would automatically go through the building department and have their plans reviewed.
Oh, okay, so even if they're under 120 square feet?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question. We've never seen one smaller than that.
Okay.
But if it's attached to the house, then it changes the square footage exemption. So now you're adding square footage to the house, so that would be reviewed. But if it's a standalone detached structure, then 120 square feet would not require a building permit or any, I'm not sure, does planning require just a cursory review of structures like that or just, it's not regulated?
Mike, why would you require, why would you count this towards the livable space and increase the square footage of your home?
Yeah, I should strike that. It's not livable or part of the, it's just attached to the structure, just.
If they attach it to the structure, it automatically needs a building permit. Attachment to the house requires a building permit.
Oh, okay. Okay, that makes sense.
Regardless of square footage.
Okay.
Thank you for using the word regardless and not irregardless.
Um, any comments, any comments on attaching it to other structures? So if they have a shed in the backyard and they want to attach a carport to the shed?
They want to attach it and the thing blows away.
Well, wouldn't that need to be?
It would increase the square footage of the original structure, so that would send it back to engineering.
I was gonna say, you'd have an engineer make sure that it's attached properly.
Are you open to allowing them to attach them to other structures in their yard?
Yes, except for if.
Maybe specify that other permitted structures.
That's a good point.
There's a lot of unpermitted structures.
So then we could change the wording to may attach to the house or other permitted structures with proper engineering and fire department approval. Do you want to allow them? Sorry, go ahead.
Question on fire department approval. Normally, just an accessory structure patio cover does not go through fire review. Normally, correct?
Correct, normally it does not.
But if they're pulling a building permit, then the fire department is gonna be looking at it, isn't that the case?
We don't usually send building permits to fire department unless it's like a new commercial or new residential structure. Additions, remodels, those don't typically go to fire department.
And that's because our, our building department staff implements the fire code as well. So they, they know the same regulations that the fire department knows, and since we're already have them here as building official, they would apply fire code if needed.
Makes sense.
As long as that review happens.
Are we striking the fire department approval and just relying, putting the burden on the building official and the building department to review it? My only concern is there's a fire and the fire department rolls up and sees an RV on fire underneath this thing and they're firefighting, they're not prepared to fight a vehicle fire, they're prepared to fight a dwelling fire. I mean, it's two different ways to fight a fire. How do we alert them or how do we make them aware that this place has a carport slash shelter slash vessel requirement?
The city does a building permit report each month. It's included in the council agendas, but it's basically every address on every permit that was pulled that month. And it says, you know, a solar permit, a pool permit, a patio cover, accessory structure, and that list does go to the fire department each month. So I guess if they're interested in that information, they can, they can track it and record it in their system because we do transmit that data to them.
And that's only permitted stuff. We know there's a lot of unpermitted stuff that fall into that same category.
Maybe we, then maybe they just don't care.
I did talk to the fire department. We, we submitted the, the agenda to them so that they could look over the staff report. We sent them the item ahead of time too, if they had any comments they wanted in there. And they said with regards to these types of structures, the fire department would be concerned with the structure if it prohibits, blocks, or limits access to various utilities, including but not limited to gas, electric, water, or solar. So we see on the side yards of houses, you have the electrical panel, you have the gas meter. Fire department is most concerned that these types of structures don't block the utilities.
Then maybe we add a language in item number three that says that when they're building these things and attaching them, they need to make sure that there is free and clear access to the following utilities, gas, access to the electric panel, et cetera, et cetera, all of the utilities that you just mentioned.
Is it ever possible that the vehicle or vessel inside will block access but not the structure itself? Does there have to be a consideration for the size of what's going on in the covering? And the location?
I would imagine that some of the vehicles, the larger RVs that get parked on the side yard, do block the utilities. There isn't anything we can do about that.
Yeah, Mike mentioned earlier, blocking access to.
Windows.
Egress and ingress and, but maybe the structure won't, but the vehicle might.
And I think in that case, you know what? I think the fire department would just pull up, say we can't do our job, turn around and leave. I, I hate to say it, but why would we want to put the firefighters in that sort of predicament?
And typically the utilities are on the front side of the fence and all these structures I see behind the, behind the fence.
But we have that it's subject to fire department approval. So we can make a process where when someone applies for one of these, we send them to fire department first, get them to sign off on your plans, bring it to us, we'll issue a permit.
Well, yeah, the fire department, first thing, their question is, what are you putting underneath there? Oh, I'm putting a 65-foot fifth wheel. Great.
So do we want to add language that there has to be free and clear access to utilities, including but not limited to gas, electric, water, solar?
Well, well, if we have the fire department look at it, they catch that.
As well as.
So as long as we have fire department approval, we don't need to specify that? All right.
But I guess I hate to, does that just apply to the structure or what's under the structure?
Well, yeah, but you have no say, I mean.
We have no say on what's under it.
Later, I'm gonna get a different thing underneath there.
Yeah, okay, so just the structure.
Number four, structure and any stormwater runoff from the structure cannot cross property lines in accordance with the California building code. Our building official recommends some clarifying wording taken out of the plumbing code. It's section 1101.2, and it, and it should read, stormwater shall be permitted to be discharged on flat surfaces such as streets or lawns, so long as the stormwater shall flow away from the building and away from adjoining property and shall not create a nuisance. So it's just a little bit more specific out of the plumbing code.
Sounds good.
Okay, number five, structure cannot have cloth, canvas, or tarp-like material covering on the tops or sides. Cloth or canvas front access covering is allowed if obtained directly from the structure manufacturer. And this was chosen just to maintain aesthetics in the residential neighborhoods. So you can keep it as is, make changes to it, say no coverings at all.
If you look at the picture from the one that's located on Genovese, that cover over it, and so it basically looks enclosed, so you can't see the vehicle that's inside.
And that's canvas?
That is a canvas front. It looks like a solid metal front, but it is canvas.
I think since that came from the manufacturer, it'd be okay.
Keep it as is? Yep, okay. Number six, location. When that's in the side yard, structures placed in the side yard must be a locate, must be located a minimum 10 feet behind the front wall adjacent to the structure. So it cannot be flush with the front wall, you have to set it back 10 feet. This was chosen to maintain aesthetically acceptable appearance in the residential neighborhood. Council member expressed a desire to remove this section, allowing it to be flush with the front wall adjacent to the house.
I'm gonna go out on a limb here and say that I can respect the opinion of the councilman to remove this section, but it's my recommendation to leave it as is.
I, I agree, keep it as is, and I think the fire department would also say that that's going to put it right in line with the utilities and certainly then whatever they put underneath there is gonna block it. So I, I suggest keeping the 10-foot.
I think that was a discussion item that came up when we first looked at this section of the code, that that front 10 feet typically has your utilities and has your gas meter and has your electrical panel near that front wall of the house. Okay, so we're gonna run with go, keep as is.
This, this doesn't change anything, but. When you have the garage, the front edge of the garage farther out toward the street and the front door of the house, you've got an automobile orientation to the property rather than a pedestrian orientation. And it used to be that garages were set back from the front of the house, so you'd have that pedestrian orientation. So here we're having the garage be, still being the frontmost visible thing and it's auto orientation, and then we're only recessing the, the other vehicles, the other vessels 10 feet. It still makes, it's still the vehicle orientation, which is.
We do have in our code that the garage is supposed to be five feet behind the frontmost wall of the house. So new, new subdivisions that are coming in are going to be built. We'll have the pedestrian-oriented front door closer to the street and the garage set back.
That, that poses a little bit of a difficulty for residents in, in that situation. So if it's already set back five feet and we're taking an additional 10, that could impede any potential use of that side yard for such RV or carport usage. It would limit people's ability to be able to, to build there. I would be okay with removing, removing that section.
It also puts them closer to the back wall.
It does.
So as, as is noted under the staff bullet point number one, Commissioner Engel, the reason that we decided for the 10 feet was because we didn't want to have to drive, we understand that there are limits, but at the same time, we didn't want to have to drive down any street and just have monument, for the lack of a better term, a giant structure right at the front gate and say, wow, that's really junking up the neighborhood. That was the whole purpose.
I, I can understand.
So here's an example of one that is more flush with the front yard, with the front wall.
Well, it depends on what kind of structure you have. If you have it flush with the front and it's, it's a fifth wheel, you got a pretty big ton there. You know, so either you're gonna ask for a longer, you know, storage underneath that or it's gonna stick out. I mean, I mean, for me, you know, my goal is not to junk up a neighborhood with a bunch of these steel structures all over the place that are, you know, really visible as you drive down the street.
What's your consensus?
If the structure is flush with the front, that doesn't mean the vessel underneath is gonna be flush with the front, or is it gonna be recessed? Hard to say, huh?
It's flush, you know, I mean, it's gonna stick out, it's gonna stick out further than the garage or whatever, or whatever's sticking out. I, I, I would prefer the 10 feet. As opposed to being flush, you know? Maybe there's a compromise, maybe five feet, but.
I remember, if I remember right from our discussion, and granted, this was a year, year and a half ago, I think there was talk when it's set flush with the front wall and some of these structures are 15 feet tall and the front of your house has a lower eve, whereas when you set the structure back, it kind of line, you know, the pitch of the roof has gone up and so it's.
Yeah, it doesn't jump out.
It doesn't jump out across the front of that house because it lined up more with a raised roof line.
What would be the problem with leaving it at 10 feet? And if somebody wanted to build it flush, then they just submit a variance.
Good idea.
Yeah, let's, yeah, leave it at 10. Yeah, let's, yeah, leave it at 10.
All right, leave it at 10. Bullet point number two, must be located behind a solid fence or gate at least 6 feet in height to be screened from the public light of way, and this was chosen for aesthetics.
Again, my recommendation is to leave it alone. And just for the record and for our folks on the call, our constituents, as well as our building official and our council, I was on the planning commission when we reviewed this, and if my memory serves me correct, we really worked hard on this section, and this is something that I feel like we all compromised on and we worked together as the planning commission. And so I would hate to have to go back and revisit it again while we spent hours already working on this.
All right, keep as is, have a gate across the front. Bullet point number three, have a side yard setback of three feet from the property line and three feet from other structures in accordance with the fire code. And at the time, this met the requirements of the building code and fire code. Our building official has given us updated language for this section, that it should have a five, should have a side yard setback of five feet from the property line, and if not attached, five feet from other structures in accordance with both current additions in the building and fire codes. And then, we had further discussion with it, with the fire code, that the fire code, and I gave everyone copies of the building and fire code, but the fire code kind of circles back and references the building code, the fire code kind of says that it should match with what the building code says, so we, it's, we don't really need to reference the fire code in this section, we could just say in accordance with the building code, because the fire code says, see the building code.
Yeah, I think we should have it at five feet.
A council member expressed a desire to remove side setbacks if a secondary entrance to the backyard is provided. However, if the side setbacks remain, then reference the fire code EMC section, which I've provided to you. Another council member expressed a desire that the setback be set at five feet from the side property line, five feet from any other structure.
Isn't that what the building official said?
That's what the building official recommends, yes.
I think it makes sense.
It looks like that five-foot separation from another building is, then it would not be required to have a fire resistance rating. Would that be, would that be conditional? So if it was made of a fire-resistant material, that it could be within that five feet of an existing structure?
Mike, I'm gonna defer to you on these questions.
Yeah, that would depend on what is acceptable for a minimum setback. So if you go with three feet, then yes, one of those walls, either the house or other structure, needs to have a one-hour fire-rated wall to meet current building code.
Call me silly, Mike, but aren't all exterior walls made of a fire-resistant material? And contain at least a one-hour fire wall on all exterior?
No, they do not. That's where the setbacks, if you meet the five-foot setbacks, then technically, the exterior walls do not have to meet a fire-rated assembly. I mean, yes, stucco is fire-rated if your house is stucco, but a lot of homes are wood-clad that don't have a fire rating.
So to me, this section three really is the meat of it, because I look at all these pictures, and how many are right on the property line or right next to it? And are we, my concern is, that's gonna eliminate a lot of these carports going up, and I don't think the council wants to do that. I'm not sure I do either. But if we put in these setback requirements, a lot of these questions go away, they're just not gonna be allowed.
Unless they're overwired or locked.
Yeah, but I'm just looking at the pictures, and I would say 80% of them are up next to the fence and up next to the house.
Well, and Commissioner Sarkozy, if you watch the city council meeting from September 20th, that's where the disconnect lies, is because we have an Escalon municipal code that all of us have been chartered to follow, and there's a certain consensus on the city council to allow folks to put up whatever they want, and it doesn't matter. And if it junks up the neighborhood, who cares? It's their property. And that's the big dilemma here, is that we are trying to work with the city council to have some guidelines, and I would say 90, I don't know, maybe 90 is too high, 80% of citizens of Escalon just want to put carports up to protect their RVs, and they don't want to go through the process. So that's the dilemma that I face, is that, okay, if we put these requirements in because we're concerned about the aesthetic look of our neighborhoods, then, I mean, then that's where the real, for the lack of a better term, battle is, is, okay, are we gonna have guidelines, or are we just gonna let people do whatever they want? And my suggestion would be, let's, I mean, like I said just a few minutes ago, we worked hard to figure out these setbacks, and some folks think that it's not really necessary, and I disagree. So that's just my opinion.
We have a builder that has a, came into the planning commission to build an RV. Storage, you know, the city has RV storage over here. I mean, I would rather see the setbacks, you know, as opposed to creating other issues. If, heaven forbid, there's a bad fire and you got one of these structures, you know, how is the fire department gonna get to the back if they need to get to the back of the house? You know?
Hey, Mike, I have a question for you. You stated that we should change the setback requirements from three feet to five feet. If the three feet met the CBC, why are you recommending changing that three feet to five feet?
The three feet met the old code, I think back in 20, what is it, 2010 was the last code that allowed three foot as a setback. When we went to the international code as the base model code, that was recommended five feet is an ideal setback. If the house has sprinklers, or any other structure has sprinklers, they allow the three foot, but more likely, obviously, these aren't gonna get fire sprinklers on them.
What's the trigger under the IBC for fire sprinkling? Is fire sprinkling a dwelling?
It's required regardless. All dwellings require sprinklers. New construction.
So if all dwellings require sprinklers, and the three feet meets the sprinklers, why can't we leave the three feet as is?
For sprinkled homes?
Because of the existing homes that do not have sprinklers.
Okay.
That would be an exception for a recently built home that has
It could be amended, that it has a side yard setback of five feet from the property line, five feet from other structures. Unless the house has sprinklers, you can have three-foot setbacks. Is that correct, Mike?
That sounds reasonable, yeah, to the house, but not to the property line, side property line, that should still be five feet.
Three feet to the house, five feet to the property line.
Yes.
So Commissioner Engel is new to us, I'm kind of curious to get his thoughts on this. What do you think?
Code's code, so you go with that. I mean, I really believe that what your statement earlier about essentially the setbacks eliminating carports, I would hold that to be true. The majority of the homes that I've seen in town are not gonna have a 20-foot relief from their property line to their dwelling. So that would ultimately eliminate the ability for anybody to have a carport, and to me, that's discouraging. There's lots of hard-working people here who like to have a few toys and store them on the side of their house, and I can agree with aesthetics, but I don't believe we can fully be the aesthetic police. We're not gonna start judging what color flowers people put in, or what color they choose to paint their car. So I would just have to defer back to code, what does code say?
And if we make all these requirements, and somebody wants to put something up, they can still come before us with a variance or a conditional use permit, couldn't they?
What burden does that put on the resident?
If it doesn't meet building code, the city can't issue a permit on anything. So it has to meet the building code requirements in order for us to be able to issue a permit on it. And so if it didn't, we could always go to planning commission for variances and use permit on zoning-related or municipal code items, but when it comes to the building code, if it doesn't meet building code, we can't issue the permit, the building inspector and official is not gonna be able to sign off on the permit.
Let's take this person here at 1640, where at whatever street. They built this carport, and if they wanted to build this, if that met code, the California Building Code, then they would have to submit a $600 variance request, and go fill out the paperwork, submit it to Diana, and then Diana would bring it for the planning commission, and then we would say, yeah, you're next. That's kind of the burden.
And why would we ever say no to it?
That makes it a matter of fees.
I have a question. If the current building code, as the building inspector stated, is five feet and five feet, and we do something different than that, are we going against what the building code suggests that we're following?
I think our zoning code could be less restrictive, no, more restrictive.
Yeah.
So we could say seven feet, 10 feet, but we can't be, we can't go less.
So I guess the question is, is this a mute point of what we're talking about right now? Eliminating the setbacks and all that other stuff? If code requires, it should be five feet and five feet?
We eliminated
Am I missing something there?
If we eliminated the setback requirements in the municipal code for these items in general, and didn't have any listed in the code, and then they went and pulled the permit, and it went through building, they would be required to meet the five-foot setback. And so then they, wouldn't, the permit would be redlined to tell them they need to meet five feet with building code, whereas if we had the setbacks, we would catch it first as planning and say you need to meet the municipal code regulation, and then, and then it would go to, so we would basically catch it before the building department would. But it would be caught either way, because one, they have to have that setback, we don't necessarily have to have that setback.
I don't think that we can just issue a blanket, we're removing all setbacks, because that opens up a huge Pandora's box for the planning commission.
So what it does, and it's come as a hiccup for planning, because, you know, planning is different than building and construction, obviously, it's a different perspective, a different specialty in this type of stuff. And so what it basically does, is what we have ran into, is that, again, the municipal code requirements are different than the building code, and so planning department allows for something, because our code doesn't specify it or says it's okay, but then some other circumstance having to do with the construction that they're pulling the building permit on, the building code says, no, you can't. And then, yeah, we do kind of run into that, well, the city said I could. Well, we did, we didn't have anything in the code that said you couldn't municipal code-wise, because we don't necessarily, we adopt building code, but there's separate processes. It goes through planning first for review, you have different people as planners, and then you have different people as inspectors, you don't really have somebody that does both. And so we have ran into that before, typically regarding things like occupancy and business types that move into buildings. A building was a shop, and now it's turning into a automotive repair shop, you know, they're changing that occupancy type, and additional regulations are applied. We don't know that type of stuff, but it comes up when the permit's trying to move forward, for that business to move in, so.
It is nice to list the setbacks in the code, because when people want to do development, they come to planning first. All right, what do I need to do? What are the requirements? What is the city regulations on putting in a carport? And so they come to planning first, and we give them this section of the code.
Unless they build it and then seek forgiveness.
Well, yes, yes. So it is nice to have that in there, so that they're aware of it ahead of time, not, you know, submitting, you know, purchasing the building, or having someone design it for them, submit it to the building department, and then they kick it back saying it's the wrong size, and then they have to redo it. So it is nice to have the setbacks in there.
We like to match building code when we can, because it just all-around makes things easier and doesn't prolong things or make things more reactive, either on the applicant or on staff, we're trying to figure out a way to fix it or address it.
Okay, I've got three things. Since I'm not in the construction field, if you have a fire rating on house walls, do you have that same fire rating on the garage walls?
In this case, the garage is part of the house.
So the same fire rating all the way around? What about with sprinklers? In the new construction, do you put sprinklers in the garage as well as the house?
I would defer to the building official for that.
Mike?
Yes, new construction, are you talking an attached garage to a house?
Yes.
So, yeah, that wall, new construction, both garage and the house have sprinklers, and there's just a minimum requirement of having half-inch drywall on the garage side of the shared wall in houses without
But not the exterior?
It's a 5/8 Type X, which is a fire-rated drywall that is in between the house wall and the garage.
Okay, thank you. Third, if
Against the fence or the fence side of the house? That's not part.
Yeah. Since we're doing a discussion setting, are we going to open it up to the public at any time, or can we have input if we're on an issue that the public has?
This is a public hearing, so yes, you will officially need to open the public hearing, but you can accept comments.
Kurt, did you, did we already go by something that you wanted to contribute on, or, okay, I'll open the public hearing if it's on issues that we've already addressed, to see if we want to make any changes or updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair Willis and Commissioner.
Sir, for the record, would you mind stating your name?
Oh, yeah, I'm Kurt Dancer, and I do live at 389 Noni Avenue. And yes, I do have a few comments on these things, but I have enjoyed the conversation so far. I've agreed with most of it, so I just, I have a whole speech applied here, but I don't want to do that at this point. I'll wait before you guys vote on anything, so I can bring up some history, unless you guys want to understand why you're here tonight, and why you're addressing this issue, which is what I was gonna address here tonight, so that's up to you. You'll hear it, but when you hear it is your decision. Are you seriously considering five-foot setbacks to the property line and to the house structure, regardless, excuse me, without thinking about sprinklers? If the house is unsprinkled, which is pretty much everything in Escalon, is that what you're proposing?
We like that option, or do we like the three foot?
Well, I think probably what we should do is follow the building code, and on existing structures, so before I answer your question, I have a question for the building official. Does the setback requirement from the existing structure to this other shelter state that it has to be five feet? Or just the setback from the property line?
It should be five feet from another structure as well, yes. It should be five feet from another structure as well, yes.
Can I ask a question, please?
Is that you, Ann?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, Mike, if a building permit came to you, a building permit application, and regardless of what the muni code says, if it showed a three-foot setback and the building code requires five, you wouldn't approve it, would you?
We would not approve it unless one of those walls was fire-rated that is perpendicular or parallel, excuse me, to the house. So if the new structure was built, which normally they're not, if these are metal, they'd have to have a one-hour fire-rated wall assembly with no openings in that new wall.
Which speaks to Commissioner Sarkozy's point that you're taking five feet from the property line and five feet from the dwelling. You're taking 10 feet right off the top.
Correct.
But if we don't agree to it, then we're in variance with the building code.
If the structure is under 120 feet, it's just going to be approved by the Planning Commission. Or not the Planning Commission, but the Planning Department.
It's under 120 feet, we don't-
Not at all. So then would a setback not apply?
Correct.
So these setbacks would only apply if it was over 120 square feet or attached to the house. That would be the only time these setbacks would apply?
We have this section on sheds, sheds that didn't need to meet the setbacks. Less than 120 square feet, less than nine feet tall.
The building code says any structure under 120 square feet. So even if we said, and maybe on a planning side, we would check setbacks, but most people aren't going to come to us on that. We could recommend they set it back. And we do try to recommend that because they have neighbors.
If our neighbors-
Possible, but I can't, I've never seen one so small. Because even to fit a car under it is like eight by 19.
Yeah.
And they're just so small, you wouldn't even be able to fit a car under it.
I agree with your original point, Sean, that we ought to take the carports out of this temporary structure and address it separately. Because there are properties in town that don't have garages, and certain accommodations have to be met for that if they want, you know, kind of what these people have right here. I know Pat, the head of the Chamber of Commerce, has that in front of his house over here on First Street because they don't have a garage. And, you know, that's kind of acceptable. I think you're missing the point, and I love the conversation again, but you're missing the point while you're discussing it tonight. It's because the city council has sent this back to you to make, can you go back to Genevieve? The city council sent this back to you and shook this at the council meeting when they were talking, saying, "We want to make this approvable." That's what they want you to do. That's why you're here tonight. And again, I've got a history of this, and I'm going to present it later on. But all these things that you're proposing now, bringing things up to code, which is great because you're a deliberate body, you look at these things there and you instill them in our municipal ordinance. They look at things from a political cronyism point of view, is my word, friends. They already have these structures. They aren't used for carports. They aren't used for RVs. Some people have offices in them. They're used for just plain old, you know, put up your storage. If you'll go to, let's see, just go through and I'll tell you which one. That one. That's around the corner from me. The current owner of this house did not put that up. The previous owner put that up, and I'll tell you, he didn't put it up with a permit. So it's a non-permitted structure. When this gentleman and his family moved in, which I truly love these guys, they're great people, they used this Wildwood trailer that you see there. It's about half the length of that storage abomination. And the rest of it is just packed to the top with storage boxes, you know, berman collecting items there. So these things are not only fire and health and safety hazards, but they also can be potentially berman and other kinds of hazards to begin with. That trailer, if it's just sitting there on the side yard, nobody cares. These things are temporary. People get rid of these things every five years is the average. They either upgrade, downgrade, or they get rid of them. That's fine. That shed is not temporary. It's there. And, you know, it is a syntax type of word there, but it's an engineered structure. It's engineered not to be attached to the house. It is engineered to house one of these units there. So that's why you're here tonight. And if you, I'd like to go back and read my thing, but I think you guys want to finish what you're doing first. And I'll go to that. So if you're going to go with the five-foot setbacks, I pretty much don't have anything else to say because that'll eliminate the use of these things, which is where I'm going to go. I think they junk up the neighborhoods. I don't see them as any need to have them. Depending upon the finchway of the situation of your yard, like this one here, you're not blocking anything. That, you know, the sun's hitting it front, back. If you put a cover over it, does it become a building? Does it have, if it's not temporary, is it permanent? If it's permanent, does it have to meet other fire code and building code requirements? That's where you get into a fuzzy line about calling it temporary. The whole idea is if you put that up, if you got it approved, you could take it with you. When we go back to our previous discussions, as you said, we worked hard and long on this. You know, we came up with three feet as kind of a compromise. And maybe that was not a good idea in face of flouting the building code. But that's why it came up to three feet. Because that other unit on Genevieve was part of the house, and it was the fence structure. And there's other things there, but, you know, there's no distance in between. You can see that he's covering all the utilities right there. If you're relying on the fire department, remember it's an Escalon Fire District. They're not a fire department in the sense that Modesto's Fire Department gets plans, reviews plans, makes comments, and submits them along with building comments and any other department that's going to take a look at it. These guys put the wet stuff on the red stuff, and pretty much they say, "Yeah, we don't care." They didn't care when we were looking at the structures over on Mesa and Plaza. And when the guy wanted to put in the housing there, and there was only one way in, egress and into and out of the property was barely wide enough for a fire truck. They didn't care. They didn't even have a comment. I don't think you rely on them. They're not experts. You rely on your building official here who knows the fire code and the building code and other codes. So forget the fire guy.
Mr. Danziger, it's been my experience, though, that, let's talk about this one on Genevieve, for example. If this gentleman or this, the homeowner decided they wanted to attach this to the home, if we allowed it per our previous revisions, they would not, I will, I will more, I will bet that this structural engineer for this carport is not going to take the responsibility to say, "Yeah, it's okay to attach to your house. Here's the signed calc. Here's..." Because now he's taking, he or she is taking on that burden. And so while we may allow it per se, I think that folks are going to be hard-pressed to try to find an independent structural engineer to say, "Yeah, we'll stamp this and we'll agree to it."
That's possible. And I don't know that insurance companies would honor any claims fires created underneath these units that affected the house, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not going to do this.
Well, Kurt-
Let's go deal with what you've done.
Well, but if I understand correctly, someone wanted to do something, and rather than coming to the Planning Commission to get permission, they got stopped, and they went to city council. So city council is directing us to look at the rules to fine-tune them if need be. Now granted, Sean, we did spend a lot of time, you know, making sure they were the way we thought they should be. But apparently there was some wiggle room, you know? And so we're being asked to take a second look, third look, fourth look, I don't know. But we're not going to eliminate every problem. And we can't go back and undo what has been done. But we can change this document for now and for the future to try and, you know, to try and keep things in a better situation, better place.
Without going through the history, these units were never allowed. They weren't allowed until a couple of years ago. And when Mr. Grease here on Genevieve came and brought it to the commission, it was voted down because of all the things you've just talked about, five-zero. Not satisfied with that, he filed the appeal to the city council. The city council doesn't look at this. They look at a potential voter and somebody that's, you know, squeaky wheel here. And they just overturned the decision. It was an arbitrary, in-your-face. And with that, they said revise this to allow these storage units to be there, which after a long time of thinking and working, we did. We came up with this. This is a lot more lenient than what you're hearing from Mark right now with the International Building Code with these five-foot setbacks. This gave a three-foot setback. And if you could meet that, even if I didn't like it, away you go.
Well, you heard earlier, when we were coming up with words like the carports to cover the vessels, the RVs, the cars, we were expanding what we were going to need to be covered. And as you just pointed out, these weren't allowed just a few years back. And who knows what's in the future? I mean, what are people going to have? What are they going to have needs for? It's an evolving situation. So we may be looking at it again to allow for something else that people don't have now or that we don't allow now.
Not all properties are created equal. We're going to go from, you know, what we've experienced here where I live with minimum 6,000 square-foot lots for R1s to zero lot lines. This won't even be an issue at that point. What you're dealing with is existing. So existing, here's a way forward. It's not good enough for the city council. They want you to make that the norm. And I'm here as a citizen, not as any kind of other representative, telling you that's just an eyesore. It's a nuisance. I don't want it in my neighborhood. My neighbor, and I've talked to him, so I don't mind him watching or listening to this thing, came to me when I was on the commission and asked me what I thought about him putting up one of these structures. Doesn't have an RV, just wanted it because other people in the neighborhood had put them up illegally. I said, "You've got to go to Diane over here. You get the requirements there. If you can meet them, great. If you can't, file for a variance." He had the audacity to come to me and ask me to fill out the variance request for him when he knew I was against it. He's got a, really, a pretty big side yard, and he could fit a 10-foot structure wide in there with three-foot setbacks on either side. And it's not good enough for him. He wanted to go the whole nine yards because it was just as inexpensive, it's the same cost to make them 16 feet wide as it is to make them 10 feet wide.
Well, as a private citizen, Mr. Danziger, do you believe that if we continue to allow these, that it's more so keeping up with the Joneses per se?
When you go back to that old gentleman I told you that was my neighbor, that RV, I don't know why they still have it. They haven't used it in three years. They used it once in the six or seven years they've lived there. For, in the beginning, their son was living in it, which is not allowed in any circumstances. And that's what people do. As you go drive around the city, you see them on the side yards. They're plugged in, the sides are open, people are living in them. And that's a code enforcement issue.
I was just going to say, that's code enforcement. I think the five of us, if you've heard our discussion, we're not, we're offering five views based on our experience and our knowledge and our understanding of how things should be. We're not, our assignment is not to cater to another body or an individual. We're doing what we think is best. We're deciding what we think is best.
I love you. I agree with you 110%. But that's why I'm standing here now and not over there, because I have the same opinion. And again, as you go through the council's ideas, as they go through here, you'll see a common thread. Do away with this section. Do away with this section. Do away with the ordinance. Anything that you want to do in your yard, if you want a nuclear reactor, you want to raise fighting cocks, whatever, your property rights usurp all of the property rights around you. That's where it's going. And you have to be aware of that. I go to all the council meetings, as you know. I don't go there to talk at all. I go to listen and learn, and I see where they're going. Over the last 12 years, the council has changed. They've done a 180 on these things. As I've, if you go to the council meeting that took place on the 20th, and you go to 1 hour, 7 minutes and .22 seconds, that's where the discussion begins. You don't have to go through the rest. You've got about 20 minutes. You'll see my dissertation. But the whole problem with these things is the city council. It's nothing else. When the gentleman asked for the variance and he was turned down here, he went to the council. They arbitrarily changed it. And that creates confusion with staff, and it creates confusion with the Planning Commission and the neighbors. The gentleman that's arguing now saw that city council meeting and said, "Look at that thing. If he can do that, then why can't I do mine?" And that's what's going to happen with each and every one of these things. And the city council created that problem. They did. And I'm not going to sugarcoat it. If you continue doing what you're doing, and I applaud you for it, and Mark, please, push that five-foot setback, the issue will kind of take care of itself.
We will.
But this allowed it to happen to a degree that it fit in these setbacks. That was the work that was done with the previous commission. And it's-
Kurt, we're just an advisory to the city council.
I understand, but when this went back to-
This is what we think. They can do whatever they want.
They, and they did.
Well, that's not-
Absolutely. That's- Nobody's arguing that, Steve.
Okay.
But when the city council asked the commission to come up with a way to permit some of these things, we did. Then the next guy comes in, wants to do this. They said, "This isn't good enough. Go back." And you see the common thread. They want you to do away with the ordinance. That's the only way you can do it because that would be the norm. They'll stick them right up against the fence. There's no runoff provisions for that. That's going into a neighbor's deal. You have no control over what's going underneath those things.
Mr. Danziger, if I could ask a question to staff, please?
Sure.
What ramifications at all does this have to any existing structures in the city? The work that we're doing today?
So we typically don't have, sorry.
So some structures are permitted. They applied for a building permit. They got approval, whether they met the code or they applied for a variance, and then they got a building permit. Those structures are permitted. Any changes that happen now doesn't affect those structures. They were permitted at the time, so they're good. A lot of these structures are unpermitted. So if they come across our radar, if we get complaints on them, like the complaint we got in September on an existing structure that was not permitted, that is code enforceable.
We don't have active code enforcement where we're out looking for those type of things. And that's basically because of the lack of staffing. We have other things, if it's not health and safety-related, but if it is submitted to us in the form of a complaint, we do open an investigation and move forward with those. And so, yeah, in this instance, somebody had complained about that structure being in the neighborhood and said they didn't think it met setbacks and wanted to know. And so it made us go out there and identify that, yeah, it didn't meet setbacks, and yeah, it wasn't permitted, so. wasn't permitted, so.
Which then, on the September 20th meeting, Mayor Als would prefer that that process be changed as well, to not have it be an anonymous complaint-driven system that if you make a complaint, then you're in trouble. Or if you make a complaint, he wants it to be publicly known who made the complaint.
And I think you should address that. I think if you, going back to 2011, we had a code enforcement person. All of these buildings would have been gone and buildings were gone, as, as Ms. Willis would know. Her husband stood right here, complained at a council meeting that a neighbor down the street put one of those up and he didn't like it. It's an eyesore and it's not permitted and it came down. These things have come down. Now, what's changed? We didn't, we don't have a code enforcement person. The city adopted a complaint-based model and so who's the code enforcement now? It's the citizens. And so, if a citizen says it doesn't want to destroy his fabric in the neighborhood and get retaliated on and makes an anonymous complaint, now he's being chastised by the very group that will not hire a code enforcement officer, now that we do have the money back again, and take that out of the citizen's hand. I mean, I think it's just, it's a bomb. Me, I'm going to be here, I'm going to complain, you're going to know it. But there's other people that say, hey, I don't want to defecate where I sleep and, and I don't want to, you know, tee, tee the neighbor up, but I am going to make a complaint because it affects me. And they're the problem? They're not the problem. The person violating the municipal code's the problem and we go back to the city council and because they want to chastise the person that makes the complaint anonymously and not the person that's coming to them looking for a variance to buy their way out of a municipal code ruling from the planning commission, you know, there's your problem. It, it's not going to change as long as they continue to do that. All they need to do is say, what did, what did the planning commission say? Because the planning commission works with pretty much everybody. That's how we came up with the three foot setback originally, even though now it's, now you're, now we're hearing it's five.
Oh, and I think, but we're not making that decision, three foot to five foot isn't arbitrary. That is based off the building code and, and, and I think as, as a planning commissioner, I rely on the expertise of the chief building official to advise the planning commission of those changes. And so, I mean, yeah, we can continue to go line item by line item, but, but I think that the more prudent thing to do would be to, if there are changes based off the adoption of the, the IBC, current version of the IBC, then the, the Escalon Municipal Code should be based off the requirements of the IBC and be done with it. I mean, and, and avoid this for lack, for the use of your term, cronyism and tit for tat and say, look, all we're doing is following the requirements of the building code. End of story. As Commissioner Engel indicated, we can't really argue with building code. I mean, as you all know, I'm in construction. It's the building code. I might not agree with it, but guess what? I have no choice.
It gives the staff a leg to stand on, it gives more weight to, to the decisions that we're making here tonight.
Absolutely.
I, I, I think you're five minutes wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
But couldn't, uh-
But stay here in case something else comes up.
They could come with a variance request to eliminate that setback, correct?
Not for the building code.
Well, this is a moot point. If we're set by the building code, it's five feet, then-
So, why are we going through this process?
Yeah, I mean, then none of these should really have ever been-
We're going through the, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, Commissioner Sarkozy. In my opinion, we're going through this process as Mr. Danzinger alluded to because there are certain city council members that don't agree the hours of work that we put into this document and they want it changed. Then my, then that opens up my concern as to, okay, if we're just going to start arbitrarily changing requirements within Escalon Municipal Code, first of all, why the heck do we even have an Escalon Municipal Code? Further, why do we even have a planning commission? Because-
Arbitraryly changing.
But, but really why we're here tonight is to make arbitrary changes to a document that we spent hours on a year ago.
Well, like Mike said, we've got an IBC now rather than just the building code, so we've got some changes external to us that we're complying with.
And you could choose, you know, the building code is five feet, you could go more if you wanted to. It's not recommended to say less because then that is contradictory to the building code, but you could do five, 10.
So, this picture we're looking at here, that was done before this IBC? Or how, how did this get approved if it didn't have any setbacks, but the building code was, had setbacks?
Because they came to us with a variance, we rejected the variance and the city council overrode us.
So, they can come to us with a variance.
The point's good. How, how did it get by the building official without objection?
Mr. Mike, would you care to answer that question?
I'm not aware of what property or structure you're, I can't see the picture from my view, but, I don't know, I'd have to look back at the records and see what the history is on this project to answer that question.
There you go. Can you see that one?
No, that's too, that's too far away.
Sorry, Commissioner Engel had something to say. You started to say something and I kind of jumped on that, I apologize.
I think that part, I think we covered my comment, but I, I do have some concerns that at, at this point, the work that we're doing here essentially has detrimental effect to our residents that any individual could drive around town and complain about every single carport in town and we remove them. So, I'm curious as to what we can do to grandfather in existing structures and have these follow on any future structures that, that could be built?
So, we've had that come up on, on other circumstances where the idea of grandfathering things in and what happens is, is this city council can say that, but you have future councils that could always overturn that. And so, even if you're trying to grandfather something, it's temporary because another council may come in and say, we don't want these things grandfathered and they reverse it. Yeah. I mean, it's so, it's one of those things where legal counsel in the past has never recommended using grandfathering termina-, terminology and moving forward with the grandfathering system because it's so temporary. I hate using that word temporary because I know it's been a conflict tonight, but, but it's, it, it can be changed at any time and so your grandfathered, you're not grandfathered, your grandfathered, you're not grandfathered and so they would just stay away from it altogether.
So, is there alternate verbiage?
I mean, I guess that's something maybe, maybe Ann can give us some additional information on, but yeah, it's always out there that a future council could come in and say, we're not doing this anymore and, and take it away. And then it creates a, a bigger issue, especially for people who have documented it was grandfathered, we're not grandfathering it. And if they're adamant about that, you know when you're going into that, we're going to, we're going to remove this grandfathering process or remove this criteria and you know you're going to upset people and if they're willing to do that.
Yeah, well, that's kind of what we're going to do now, we're going to upset people because it sounds like that's what would happen, right? Is essentially every carport in town would be taken down. Not, not every, but the majority.
If it was overturned into us.
The majority of the carports that I've seen in town would have to be removed, which would, that creates a detriment itself. It's, it's quite a few upset individuals. There are a lot of these structures in this town.
And that's, that's part of the issue with grandfathering, like we said in the beginning, if they got it permitted, regardless of how we changed the rules throughout the years, they have that permit on file that it was allowed at the time they constructed it. So, even if our code changes, they can still keep it. The majority of the projects in town are unpermitted and therefore they don't have any protection because they never permitted it.
Okay, so is there a system that allows for John Q. Public to, let's go to a particular one, I, I don't really know an address, but if there's a particular address that has one of these that's unpermitted, without telling them to tear it down, can they pull a building permit and, and pay the permit fees and keep it up? I think that would be a fair, as, as long as they can justify that it meets code.
Well, with the setback, it automatically doesn't meet code, so you're tearing it down.
That's the issue is they would have to adjust it to meet code to get the permit, whatever the code regulation is.
But that's not going to come into effect until the city council approves whatever they want to do once we're done discussing this, is that correct?
At this point in time, right now, we, we're not moving forward on code enforcement for these items.
Yeah.
Pending this being updated.
Yeah.
And then once it's approved, any, any complaints we receive on, on these type of structures or anybody who comes in wanting to, to construct one and wanting to pull a building permit, this is, this code is what we would give to them to use.
Hey, Ann?
Yes?
If we make adoption or amendments to this ordinance, this is an ordinance or this is the building code? If we make-
It's an ordinance.
If we make changes to the municipal code, can we add a qualifier to state that this goes into effect for any structures built after November 9th, 2021 and have it move forward that way?
Well, that, that would be the case anyway. I mean, it, it applies to, yeah, ordinances are not retroactive.
I think what we're trying to avoid is having folks on an unpermitted carport having to tear it down and we're, we're trying to figure out a compromise as to what we can do moving forward versus having to avoid people tearing them down because if the very thing that we've been talking about, the five foot setback on either end, that trumps 95, 97% of all of these and to Commissioner Engel's point, they're going to have to tear them down, which is going to do nothing but infuriate folks. So, how do we relax?
Yeah, there's no, there's, there's no way, no, there's no way to, to permit unpermitted structures that don't comply with the building code. That's just, you just can't do it.
So, there is no compromise?
The building official can't, can't approve a permit that doesn't comply with the building code.
So, is there a way to not require permits for these structures?
Do away with the ordinance, do away with the commission.
No, no, because the building code requires a building permit for any structure over 120 feet.
Over 120 square feet. How did we, when, when-
And it doesn't come to you unless it's over 450 feet. That's when they need to get a planning commission approval.
So, this is really, I mean, I, I don't really know why, I mean, why we're struggling over this. The, the building code is what it is. You can't, you can't like waive those requirements.
But how did we, if, if we can't waive those requirements, how come we were able to say have a side, side yard setback of three feet when the building code says five?
That was the previous building.
No, it used to say three.
It used to say three?
Yeah. It has changed.
And it's changed to five?
Yeah, that's why he's putting-
And anybody who got a permit when it said three feet and they only have a three foot setback, they're fine, they're permitted.
Do we know roughly how many of these units have been permitted?
Not very many. Most, I would say most, 90% of them in town probably.
Have not.
Don't are unpermitted, yeah. They just go up.
And going forward, still on-
Wait, 90% are, are unpermitted?
I would say about 90% of them in town are unpermitted. Most, most of them, we, this is, I mean, we maybe get one to two permits a year on these, if that.
If that.
If that. It's not something that most people pool. A lot of them are shocked to find out that they are required.
We don't have a code enforcement officer.
Yeah.
And a code enforcement officer would see these things on their rounds and they would deal with them as they see them. Unfortunately, we're complaint-based and they're up before a neighbor says, hey, wait a minute and now you've got, you've got a problem with the city, you've got a problem in the neighborhood. It's a really unintenable situation and we should take it out of the hands of the, the citizens of this town and get somebody in charge that can handle these things and it's backed up by the city administration and the city council, like they used to do.
I disagree. I think the citizens have a huge say in what happens in Escalon.
No, I'm not saying they can't complain, but the problem is they're the ones that do complain and then you get the city council and you can look at it at that September 20th meeting saying, you know, I want to know who these people are. Well, once you start demanding that and say, well, we're not going to accept an anonymous tip and a complaint on an obvious violation, you're not going to get any more tips. And so, you're, all this, all these structures will just keep, you know, expanding around the city and we're just junking up the city. We're going to turn it into an RV storage lot, which I don't think is anybody's desire. I mean, we've got a mayor that shakes his fist at the sky over metal birds that fly over temporarily, but you know, you put up a metal structure that's an eyesore like that, probably a health and safety issue, I guess it's okay because, well, maybe because he has one, you know, and that's just not right and it's not fair. These things were never allowed to begin with. The mayor, at the old Einhorn Building, when the city council meetings were over at the library, held up his, his cellphone and said, I've just got off my bike, I rode around town, there's 44 of these things, you know, we got to start, what are we going to do about it? And they've been debating it ever since. And then when you come up and you allowed that one, the next guy to complain, which is why, again, why you're here, he wasn't upset, he was upset with the money, the fees, that he was, he was going to put something up that wasn't going to get, you know, needed to have a conditional use permit, was going to have to come to the planning commission, pay that fee, it wasn't going to get approved, then he was going to have to file for a variance and then he's going to have to pay that fee and when that didn't work, he, he was going to have to pay another fee to come to the city council so they could overturn your decision. And so, that's why it hasn't gone up and they put a stay on everything right now. He's not putting it up, he's waiting for your decision here and let me tell you, I'm with you. I agree with everything you've said here tonight, but boy, that's, that's oil hitting water or water hitting oil, if any way you want to look at it. So, I just wanted you all to be aware of why you're here and the history. The, the history of these things were never to be allowed. They, they got allowed because we don't have an enforcement system that's really capable of, of keeping up with these things. You know, people want to put an RV on the side of their, their yard, fine, you know, that, that's permitted. There aren't, I don't know that there's any setback requirements on that. Is there, Mike?
No.
I don't know if there's something I can do, but I'd like to motion to continue so that I could do some more research and really kind of dig in, go around town and see how many of these things there are, what the impact to our community really would be.
And I would suggest you look at the old Youtubes that I suggested to you. You don't have to look at two and a half hours, one hour, seven seconds in on the, what, what meeting was that?
September 20th.
September 20th, thank you. And you'll, you'll get the flavor of it. And then, you know, the city council prior to came up with some, some of their own suggestions and they're in here tonight, you know, about the runoff from these things and when you look at the Flammings property over on First Street, they, they got within a foot and a half of their neighbor's fence and they came in for a conditional use permit and probably we shouldn't have, based on the, the code that as we now know it, we, we should have just turned down the whole thing, but we worked with them as a, as a commission and, and gave them options. If they'd removed the lattice work from, from the fence and get it down to six feet, you know, they were, they were within three feet of the house and they still are, not five feet of the dwelling with that RV structure out there. You see it right there, but overturned. There was, there was a 5-0 consensus on this commission on how to, that was a two and a half hour meeting just on that and we came to a compromise, the, the Flammings, you know, agreed to it, but the council, the mayor didn't like the way it went down. So, they brought it up, they overturned it. It's an arbitrary thing, they had no, other than, you know, this is the way we like to do stuff around here, you know, this is a nice, warm little community, depends on who your definition is and who you're talking to at the time, you know, that got allowed. So, what does the next person do? They watch that YouTube and they said- They watch that YouTube and they said, you know, I'm going to do anything I want in my yard and it doesn't matter what you guys say or what staff says, I'm going to go to the city council. I just don't want to pay the money. I want you to reduce those fees. So instead of paying, I think Mr. Abernathy said it was $2,145 to get approval from the city council to do whatever he wanted to do out there, he didn't want to pay it. And you've got some of the council saying, you know what, those fees are really high. Those fees are meant as a deterrent for people that are not sticking with what the code is. And if you're not going to stick with the code, you have to ask for a variance. And you have four distinct requirements to meet to get a variance. And if you don't meet, and usually you don't meet the first one. And so you shouldn't be able, you know, you go to appeal. The city council should be using this commission as the buffer. You know, they're a political branch, you know, they want to get reelected. They've got this branch here to make these decisions and stick to them and treat people fairly, which I know you do.
Well, and I think that we should. I don't want to, well, maybe at this hour to continue makes sense. But on the other hand, I don't want to continue to look around the community to see what's out there because we're not, we're not code enforcement, we're not going to affect what's already there, we're going to affect what's coming in the future. And for a paragraph to say, the building official recommends, and then put that sentence in there, you know, we've got him saying it, we've got the code that we're abiding by, we're making a decision to put something on paper. I do tend to be a rule follower, so I like to have rules. And I just, that's our job tonight. We're here to just pick what we want to put in there and have be done with it.
Chair, may I ask a legal question?
Yes.
Sure.
Anne, is a decision made by city council legally binding for future within city limits? So for example, if the city council makes a decision, does that set legal precedence moving forward on similar cases throughout the city?
You mean like variances and use permits?
Correct.
No, they're all individual, they're all on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
So legally, no.
Because my fear is that we make a decision or city council makes a decision and goes around us and they make a decision and then that, then we run into a situation where then that's used as legal precedence to set future planning commission decisions. That's why
Well, legally, it doesn't. I mean, as a matter of fact, it might encourage other people to, you know, and as Mr. Danziger said, to, you know, go that same route. But it's not, it's not a legal precedent. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, thank you.
I'm still not clear, if the building, I hate to keep bringing this up, but if the building code was three, now it's five, how did we get to that structure on Genevieve being right next to the fence? Somehow that had to get overrode. And what I'm hearing tonight is we don't have
Is that the one that we asked Mike about and he said he couldn't see the picture?
Yes.
Well, that is a really good question.
And I think even though it was three, and so I think I can, if I definitely don't want to, I'm definitely not a building official and I sure as heck am not legal counsel. But in summary, Commissioner Sarkozy, I think the reason that, or the way that that got built was because, if my memory serves me correctly, this carport was built, after it was built, a request for a variance came to the planning commission. We, for the lack of a better term, were all frustrated because we were like, why did you go ahead and build this thing anyways? And so they skamed, he came to us, asked for a variance. We denied the variance and then that appeal was made to the city council and the city council said, sure, we don't care. I don't care if it's one feet, three feet, five feet, sure, looks great, have a nice day.
Your recollection may be a little different than mine, but I believe the applicant came in and was trying to do it right and went to the city, found out the requirements, did like my neighbor thought, I'd rather have the biggest thing I can put in there. And then when he knew what the requirements were and he couldn't meet them, asked about the variance and came, you know, to get the variance approval, didn't get it. Went to the city council, got overturned because I think that didn't go up until after he got the approval from city council. I remember seeing the steel out on the street and driving by it and, because I wanted to show my wife, how do you junk up a city? You do that and you do it over and over and over again.
But how can the
So that's my recollection.
How can the city council override the building code?
Every single exhibit here would not qualify.
What was that? What was the answer to that question?
I'm sorry, I just made a comment and interrupted Mark's question.
Oh, I'm sorry, my question was, if the code was originally three-feet setback, how can the council override the building code?
Well, if Mike is still here, I'd like to hear that too. Even if a variance is given, the building, the building permit would still be contrary to the building code, so.
I don't think city council has the authority to override a building code.
Is that Mike?
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, I agree with that comment. I don't believe, I don't know the legal precedence.
I don't either, I don't either. So that just brings the question back, how did this get permitted?
Without offending anybody, they didn't have the proper legal advice at the time that this was coming either. So live and learn.
When was
I'm just saying, live and learn.
Sorry.
There was, there was councils, you know, present when the presentation was made to ask to have it overturned and there wasn't anything said about that. I don't know that anybody had the knowledge to ask the question at the time. You're asking it now, I don't want to go back and, you know, play armchair quarterback. But I like the question that's asked and I like to see that being addressed moving forward. I would say that one of, one question that was asked here of the city council, and I agree with, is they wanted to know chapter and verse where it says about the setbacks. And I think that's legitimate, you know? If you're going to have a code, cite the code section. And so, you know, if you do anything to whatever the ordinance, you might want to add that section that justifies it.
Invariance should be able to, to at least challenge code because we see that all over, right, with setbacks and those types of things. I would think that there's a legitimate challenge in there, I'd be curious as to what.
It just depends what the, what is being constructed. And so we have the setback requirements for like primary structures and so those are typically the five feet. And that's probably because that's what the building code is. All I can think of at this time was that our, at that time, our accessory building code was out of date. And it wasn't brought to our attention until we had to update it, is what I'm thinking. I mean, we, not all of our codes are constantly updated and so if we're working off of something that's not updated, it's going to be that way, yeah.
My next question would be for the building official. Does the definition of the structure determine the code? If it was called something else, does that affect how the code reads or is it just structure?
No, it depends on the occupancy of the, of the structure. These in question are considered a U accessory structure.
So these setbacks then apply to U, a U structure?
A U occupancy, yeah.
Which is a garage?
Garage, yeah.
Okay.
Accessory.
So, I mean, I don't, I really, I love the dialogue that we're having. I mean, I think it's so super important. But in summary, I believe that we fall to the requirements of the building code. Leave it at that. I mean, because otherwise what we're doing is, I mean, and obviously city council is going to do what they're going to do. But I think that Anne and Mr. Velazquez are smart enough to understand now to tell the city council, hey, if you approve this, guess what? You're in violation of the building code. So, I mean, we can only hope because Genevieve is a perfect example and kudos to Commissioner Sarkozy.
How can this, something like this get built?
This could be it, if they have a fire-rated exterior, then that, that three or five feet can be the variance, is that correct?
But this is zero.
And I think we talked about that where the building official states this should read, have a side yard setback of five feet from the property line, five feet from other structures. And we had talked about adding to that to say, oh, that was unless the house is sprinkled, three feet. Mike, if they fire rate the walls, can they have it three feet?
Yeah, if one of the walls is fire-rated, then
The wall of the structure or the wall of the house or the fence?
It depends, either one. Usually that's not a one-hour rated structure, that would, or construction. So that would be obviously a difficult task. So more likely would have to be the new structure would easily make, well, not easily, but easier than the dwelling house fire-rated.
So they can have a fire-rated wall of the house? They can have a fire-rated wall of the structure or they can have a fire-rated fence?
I, the property line is the property line. I don't believe that that can be constructed as a fire-rated separation between properties.
Well, the people over there on Stanislaus were going to do just that. When they built the garage, they built their outside entertainment area. They wanted to be a foot and a half and the fireplace would have been a foot and a half from the fence. And they were told, well, if you're going to do that by the building official, you need a one-hour structure for that, tear down your brand-new fence and put up a concrete wall. And then they didn't want to do that. But that was going to be a solution to that problem. And whether you convince your neighbor to go in on the cost of a, you know, masonry brick, concrete, one-hour wall.
There was an alley behind the property.
Yeah. So fellow commissioners, I know I've been saying this, but I feel like any variances or any differences that are in variance with the building code, we are taking on, we're taking away the roles and the responsibility of the chief building official and of the planners and city staff.
If we use a bullet point here about the building official, what he has said, and then qualify it like Diana was saying about new construction with sprinklers, fire-rating walls, this could be the option for three, the number three under 6A.
Mike, could you give us some expanded language on that five-yard setback to include what they can have with a sprinkled house and what they can have with a fire-rated wall?
Yeah, I could drop something out.
Okay.
Are you need it now?
No, building code is building code. Okay, are we ready to move on from the setbacks?
Rear yard, yeah.
Rear yard, structures placed in the rear yard must be located behind a solid fence, six feet high. Do we want to keep that? This was chosen for aesthetics, the same as the side yard?
Yes.
Okay. Have a setback of three feet from the side and rear property line, three feet from other structures. And same, same topic as when we had it in the side yard.
I defer to the building official.
Mike, we can
What was that comment?
We can update that section to have the five feet and then the additional language about sprinkled houses and fire-rated walls.
Okay, yeah, that would include.
Mike, I think we need to make the distinction in this bullet point as a, to define existing versus new dwellings because that's really the trigger, new versus existing. So if there's certain requirements
We would just have to identify that existing house is if it was constructed with sprinklers, that have to be something that they would have to divulge at during the plan review process.
What were you saying, Commissioner?
I was going to say, 2019, you had to have sprinklers on our new houses.
Isn't it 13?
No, 2019.
They build a zero lot lines. And so all of this you're talking about is moot for that new kind of construction. If you drive into Livermore, right down First Street there, it's just house on a house on a house, everything's sprinkled, there's not going to be any of these structures. So my input.
On this, on this note for the rear yard, a council member expressed a desire that the setback be set at 10 feet from the rear property line. So the building code requires the five. A council member wanted it to be, have a larger setback of 10 feet. Planning commission have any recommendation or thoughts on increasing the setback in the rear yard?
What are our other setbacks, 10 feet?
Yes.
That patio.
Patio is 10 feet, a garage is 10 feet. If you have just a storage shed with no occupancy, it's five feet.
Well, if everything else in the municipal code is at 10 feet, that's five from the building official.
I mean, what's, I don't see the difference between five foot on the side or a five foot on the back. You're actually closer to the neighbor on the side yard than you are in the backyard, so.
I guess it may be, people don't usually occupy the side yard for any, you know, daily activities, whereas people spend most of their time in the backyard. So if you're in your backyard, you're going to be seeing the structure in the neighbor's backyard.
And I would refer you to Ms. McManus's variance request over on Countrywood over in the, was it the
Estates.
Estates?
Mm-hmm.
And she has no neighbor behind her and she wanted to put a pergola or whatever it was designed within five feet of her left back fence because the yard is so small. And because it didn't affect the other neighbors there, I believe it was granted. And that's the answer to your question. So if it's, if it's 10 feet and you leave it at 10 feet, someone can request a variance and, you know, meet those four standards right there. And if they do, you make your decision. I would also point out on the Genevieve, that gentleman, when he was, got the decision overturned and was allowed to do that, I went up to him at the end of that council meeting and I said, get your variance money back. You got, you won your case and he did. So the city did return that money to him for that variance. So, you know, maybe city policies can reflect those kind of things so that when you're making your decisions, they're based on fact. And, you know, they get overturned, the city just lost the money off of all the effort you put in in addressing the issue. Again, those, that money is, it reflects staff time, commission time. You know, everybody's researching all these things here and, you know, they're not made frivolously. You know, they may get overturned frivolously, but I don't think they were made that way to begin with.
Okay, the second bullet point says five feet and
Building code has that minimum five feet, but then the extra wording for the fire sprinklers were that. This council member wants more than the five feet. Any recommendation for that or stay at the five feet?
I agree at the five.
I like the five.
Okay, five.
Front yard. Let me bring up a picture. Front yard, temporary structures, and we can change temporary structures to our new wording, are prohibited from being placed between the frontmost wall of the residence and the front property line. Exception, dwellings that do not have a garage, adequate side yard space, adequate backyard space to accommodate a driveway and accessory structure at the discretion of the city planner may construct a carport in the front yard area with a building permit under the following requirements. To maintain harmony in the surrounding neighborhood and produce an attractive structure, structure shall be installed permanently, constructed and painted out of the same material as the house to match the dwelling's architectural style and color scheme. And this exception was included at the recommendation of city council as several older lots in town do not have the space to construct covered parking unless it's in the front yard.
Those are houses that were built on the zero lot line.
Thoughts on this section, keep it as is, any changes?
So it seems like there's an exception there to, potentially an exception to setbacks.
If they have no garage or no space to put one in, yeah.
So with the, when the exceptions code, so we say dwellings do not have a garage, check. And then if they have an adequate side yard, they could build one of these and put it up right next to the house or right next to the fence?
Just like everybody else is asking to do. Instead of, if he, if this residence, say, that's in the picture, had had, you know, the fifteen-foot side yard, we wouldn't let you put this structure in your front yard. We would tell you to put it in your side yard. But if you, like, this person only has five feet between the house and the...
So what if they had ten feet? Would you make them put it on the side?
If they can't meet the code for the structure in the side yard and they don't have enough space to put a driveway to the backyard and put the structure in the backyard, only as a last resort are you able to put it in the front yard. And it can't look like the structure here in the picture. You have to build it out of the same materials as the house. It needs to be painted to match the house.
Seems to me it would be more desirable to put it on the side yard, up next to the fence and up next to the house than see something in the driveway.
Yeah, that's a last resort.
You're thinking, you're thinking in the front yard, but to the side, not in the middle where your driveway is.
I'm thinking on the, just unfortunately, I hate to bring it up, just what we were talking about with the RVs.
So either you need to be in the side yard or the backyard, or you don't get covered parking. So no exception.
Yeah.
Oh, were those apartments on Califor, no, not California.
Propose the, the office, those can't get converted?
No. Weren't there a couple of units? One's facing the side street, one's facing... And then they put like a multi-car carport.
Recently?
Oh, it's been a few years. I, I look at this structure, you know, if this structure here were on the side, it would block the windows. You know, it couldn't be that size. It does look awful in the front like that, but...
With the exception, so is, is there code to the front? For a setback to the front of the property, so they would have to remain in that? Or would that be an exception?
Michael, to defer that question to you, is there a setback the structure needs to be to the front property line? Because that, that question didn't come up in our, in our, when we set the code a few years ago.
That's usually under planning zoning codes.
So the, the building code...
What structures are located.
The building code doesn't have a setback to the front property line?
No. If there is a side back rear next to another, that's all the same in the building code.
Okay.
That's where the exception comes in. So I'm going to go out on a limb here. And I agree with Commissioner Sarkozy to eliminate the exception. Because while I can appreciate what these folks are trying to do and create a covered carport, that sure does look ugly.
This is not what it's going to look like going forward. It's got to match. The house, correct, material. Do you need a shake roof on this property?
Right.
Or top, top jingle?
Yeah, composition shingles. Mr. Danziger brought up the property. There's one on First Street. First Street, you go down McHenry, turn left on First Street. It's one of the first couple ones. They have a wood, kind of got these like side braces on it.
Extension, the extension of the house.
Extension of the roof, right.
Yeah, but that thing has been there for like ever.
But that's an example of one that is built to match the house, not look like a detached metal structure in the front yard. So any that are allowed to be constructed would have to be built as if it was part of the house.
Now, how do we do that without creating a undue financial burden for an elderly resident? That's, that's a big question I have. Because who knows, maybe this is an elderly person that has difficulty moving in and out of their house. They come out to their car, sorry, we're not going to approve this eight-hundred-and-ninety-five-dollar carport that you bought at Crow's Landing Swap Meet. You know, because we don't want to create a financial burden for these folks, but we're just trying to make sure it also doesn't look junky either. I don't know.
I mean, in this case, I mean, when you talk about front yard setbacks, I mean, certainly easements come into play as well, you know, with anything permanent. I mean, this is right on the sidewalk line. I, I agree. I mean, it looks like this person's just trying to keep their car in the shade. You know, this is a thousand-dollar job versus a ten-thousand-dollar job plus.
Well, you can see that it's an older section of town. The rear of that car is actually out on the sidewalk. And I stay away from carports. That's your, that's your quagmire. I, I remember the gentleman that came to the city council here a year, a year and a half ago, that had a Buick in the front of his yard. I think it was off Baker or Danielle. And he had a fabric, one of these things. And he wanted to make, he knew it was illegal, but he wanted to have a length of time to, to keep it there while he was finding another place to put his, his vehicle. Question was, how long has it been there? It had been there quite a while. And the effort to move the vehicle, I don't think was there. So the council ruled against him and said, take, rule for staff. Who's staff was still on, take it down. And they did. So not all properties are created equal. There's old properties, there's middle properties, and then there'll be the new ones.
This does say at the discretion of the city planner. So, I mean, I, I guess I'm opposed to being too dictatorial. And, and you pointed out the income of the individual might be such that, you know, can't go too elaborate on it. But if the city planner says yea or nay, or bring it up a notch or two aesthetically and, you know...
And that's where the variance comes in. Number one, are you a disadvantaged property? Yeah, you are. I mean, do the people in the surrounding area have the same situation? What, how they dealing with it? Or are you unique? And, you know, that's where a decision the commission can make, you know, on the...
You're doing the business of manufacturing carports.
This is like, that's what we need to be with a hundred and twenty square.
We're looking for ways to generate revenues.
Oh, there we go, there we go.
So we have two who say get rid of the exception. One says leave as is.
I say leave the exception. Up to Commissioner Castellanos.
Repeat the question.
Are we keeping the exception or not?
Keep the exception or remove it?
If it's at the discretion of the city planner, our variance can be applied for and it can come to the commission. Otherwise...
I'm going to defer my comments. Go later.
On this section?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I, I guess I would just, just, I agree with something Mr. Danziger said. If you remove the exception, someone could still ask for a variance and might have, might be able to, you know, to meet those standards if they don't have a garage or whatever, you know, they might be able to make. So, but if you leave the exception in, then they wouldn't have to get a variance. They just have to get the city planner's permission. I just wanted to, want to say if you remove the exception, that doesn't mean that they don't have any avenue. They, but, you know, it'd be more expensive and more, you know, more time-consuming.
I think we have faith in our city planner.
And I know we've talked about those fees a lot. And when it comes to variances and use permits and such, those are services that are above and beyond what the city does normally. And so that's why the fees are a little bit higher because anytime you're not charging the, the staff time and hours and stuff that are, that are actually being put into the permit and lowering that fee, essentially the, the community is making up that difference. And so those, those services are considered discretionary, but also more of a special service because they're looking for a special approval that goes beyond the municipal code. And that's why those fees are more expensive because it's, it's beyond the normal day-to-day thing. It's, it's a, it's a special item.
So in this instance? In this instance, would that require that special attention?
If it was a variance, that's considered the special, the special item, yeah, special item. If you did it as a variance, but as an exception, no.
Okay. But just normally, under the circumstance, the one-off for the carport, would that be substantially more work for staff? Or would that just be kind of standard, around-the-mill thing? It would run through pant, planning as long as everything was engineered, met code. It would just be a standard-issue permit?
Unless, unless there was something that the city planner was not comfortable with, then it would, then it would be pushed up to planning commission to decide. And we do run into those instances every once in a while. We're at staff level, we're not comfortable with making that decision. Or they, they have a different approval that they're wanting in addition to that. And that's when we would end up saying, you know what? You need to go to planning commission for this. And so we would push it back up to you.
Leaving the exception in.
In that case...
Go ahead, Diana.
In that case, would they have to pay the, what, what application fee would they have to pay, if any? If you were going to send it up to the planning commission?
So we have a variance application. And then we also have a, we have a fee for a planning commission approval. And so we'd have to figure out which one it would be.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we have two different fees.
But it might be, it might be less than a, than the fee for variance. It might be a fee for planning commission review or something like that. Review of a staff decision, yeah.
Yeah, we have one that's more of like a, a planning commission approval. And then we have one for an actual variance. So it would be determined what that is and then we would move forward with that.
Okay.
So for, for clarification, if we leave the exception in, then it's at the discretion of the city planner to make that call. If we take out the exception, then that would require a variance that then that would come before the planning commission.
Correct. Number seven. All structures described in this section must be maintained in continuous like-new condition to not affect the aesthetics of the neighborhood or become a nuisance.
You know, aesthetics are nice, but they're not supreme. I would like to have safety be a factor, a consideration there.
So as not to affect the aesthetics of the neighborhood?
Or the safety of the occupants? Like Kurt was talking about, the, the storage under that one covering and maybe rat-infested or vermin-infested and...
Would that be a nuisance?
It's also a matter of public safety.
The safety, public safety.
Not affect the aesthetics of the neighborhood, become a nuisance, or affect public safety?
Yeah.
It's kind of just, I, I agree with what you're saying, but the term's just loose. So that could be, who deems that it's safe? I agree with what you're saying.
Well, who deems aesthetic pleasing, I mean?
That's, that's fair, right? I think that's arguable. So the, the points in there are kind of just for, for show.
Okay.
Well, if you say health and safety, then there's some, there's some guidelines on what's not health and safety, isn't there?
There, Mike, there's health and safety points in the, in the building code, correct?
Um, yeah, I'd have to find out where that's referenced. But there are references to that, yeah.
Not just mention public safety, public health and safety.
Health and safety.
To me, it seems like this number seven, I mean, I like the intent of it, but it's going to come down to someone making a report that it's, doesn't look good or it's not safe. An anonymous report or a non-anonymous report. So I think, I mean, it's fine to keep in there, but it's kind of moot.
I agree.
As currently structured.
Just, just understand that there's, that's unenforceable. Even if you got a complaint, I don't know that you're going to step in and create a war over that.
Well, if it was a nuisance, you would.
Well...
I think we do have what designates a nuisance, and that's in our...
Yeah, or it's not safe.
There's a whole list of things that constitute a public nuisance. And many of them do have to do with public health and safety.
Those things would be measurable, whereas aesthetic, you know, aesthetics would be measurable, so.
Yeah, I, I do agree that, you know, that just abating something because it's not like new, you know, might be, that's more difficult than, you know, than something that actually arises to a public nuisance.
So can we reference, instead of what we're saying like-new and aesthetics, can we reference the, the section on nuisances?
You want to take out the like-new condition? Or you just want to add in?
I, I would, I would propose taking out like-new.
Just maintain in a condition so as not to affect the, well...
You can't say like-new though, because one of these things is up there for 10 years and the sun's going to bleach it out. That's not like-new anymore.
And is that unacceptable aesthetically in the neighborhood? If, I guess if this canvas cloth becomes ripped and now it's flapping, it's no longer like-new, is that okay? Or does it need to be replaced?
Be maintained in a condition so as not to affect the public health and safety or become a nuisance. And then you're leaving out the aesthetics and you're leaving out the like-new. Saying in good condition.
Yeah. If you strip, if you strip it down to that, then you probably don't need the section at all. Because, you know, you're not, you're not allowed to, to maintain your property if it's, if it has become a nuisance.
Properly maintained is what we want to, the driver.
If you go to chapter seventeen dot one-four, under the purposes in the R1 districts, section G and section H address those, those issues. And I guess could be referenced if you'd rather reference what's already there. And, you know, G is to protect residential properties from noise, illumination, unsightliness, which are what these things are. Odors, dust, dirt, smoke, vibration, heat, glare, which could be that, and other objectionable influences, whatever that is. And then H is to protect residential properties from fire explosion, noxious fumes, and other hazards. So that could be...
So it's to be maintained in, in agreeance with the Escal municipal code, chapter blah, blah, blah.
What section were you referencing?
It's chapter seventeen dot four, your Exhibit A in your agenda.
Those are the T definitions?
Uh, no, this is under R, R1, low-density residential district.
We don't have that tonight.
Oh, oh, oh. I think you're right.
There we go.
Right there.
Yeah, there you go.
Actually pulling it from the next item that's on the agenda.
Maybe that's what I did too. Sorry.
Yeah, that's a, go down a little bit more. Protect residential properties from, well, that's...
Protect residential properties from unsightliness?
And it's an objectionable influence if you have a bunch of rats running around your...
We don't need to repeat all those. We could just say in agreement with the code, section G and H, right?
Yep. And then you're tying that to the municipal code, because then...
All structures described in this section must be maintained, must be maintained in accordance...
Yeah.
In accordance with EMC seventeen-one-four-oh-one-oh. Four-oh-one-oh. Okay, so that finishes out the code as existing. And we have our notes on that. Council proposed other ideas that weren't already in the code. One proposal was just to remove this entire chapter altogether and let people build what they want on their own property. Another proposal...
Is that, is that a viable option? Or is that just something that was... Is that a viable option, or is that just something that was kind of thrown out in discussion?
It hasn't been discussed that in depth, that all of the council would be aware that you can't do that at this point in time. That's going to be something we're going to have to advise them. That building code has minimum requirements that you're not going to be able to object to. And so this is what one of the council members wanted, not knowing that.
Okay. That was just trying to clarify.
Yeah, so that'll be brought to them at the next meeting as well.
It was strictly a libertarian view that one council person's opinion was no government agency, you included, should be able to tell a property owner what they can do in the confines of their property lines.
I think it's within their rights to have their opinion.
I'm not disagreeing. I'm telling you, that's where it came from. I'm not trying to influence you. I'm just trying to give you the history and where it came from.
Let me just say, Kurt, I appreciate your input tonight. You were on this body for a long time, and we may be doing this in an unorthodox fashion, but I'm glad that you're here to contribute to, you know, our memories that are not quite as sharp as yours, and so thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, and I've spent a lot of time, because other people have different hobbies or interests. Mine is good governance. And I'm not out to win. I'm out to have good governance. It's good for everybody, and that you treat all individuals as close to the same as you can, variance as if you need to be.
And for the record, Chair, I would like to point out that Mr. Danziger is wearing a Pittsburgh Steelers baseball hat.
For you, yeah.
For you to cover up my cancer surgery.
Another council member proposed an option to include a way to require neighbors' agreement or acceptance of a proposed structure.
And that's basically what a variance process does. You know, when you're applying for a variance, one of the staff's jobs in accordance with that variance is to mail out to all the neighbors within the 300-foot
Radius.
Area radius. I'm trying to think of the word. That way, they're aware of that item. And so they did try to discuss that, how could we do that?
So you see an R's for the whole city?
Yeah. Well, see, and it's hard, too, because then you have the flip side where it's not always the same property owner. The house sells, there's turnover, somebody else moves in, they don't like it. And there's different opinions on that as well, but that was brought up as an item.
Another idea was that properties containing these structures submit to an annual fire department visit.
That's a waste of time.
Another idea was to limit the length of the structure to 45 feet or less, and a height of 15 feet or less. Another idea was that the structure, it be spelled out that the structure must be a complementary color to the dwelling color. Another idea, whatever rules are established under this process, there should be no grandfathering of unpermitted structures.
What does that mean?
That's kind of what we discussed earlier, where we have ones in, structures that are in town that currently aren't unpermitted. There has been inquiries on whether we would be able to grandfather in all structures prior to this code. And so the answer has always been if they're not permitted, they can't be grandfathered. But if they were permitted in the past, we don't say they're grandfathered. They were permitted at the time that they were allowed. We just don't use their grandfathering anymore, and if they're unpermitted, it's not recommended we do that.
And I agree with you 100%. My question is, what did the council person mean by that? Did they mean if they were unpermitted, they're not grandfathered, so they have to be removed? Is that what they're asking you to do?
I think they just wanted it clear that they didn't want to get into the into the potential process that staff would have to go through to do that. And so there is no grandfathering of unpermitted structures, because that was discussed at one time. They just wanted, if it's not permitted, it can't be grandfathered.
And if it can't be grandfathered, it can't be there?
Correct.
So what are they asking you to... You got to be careful about how you word those things.
And I think that was, I would think that would be in response because of that meeting of September 20th, that the potential resident that had the issue with the structure that was in code, had a code enforcement case opened on it. They were suggesting that the council grandfather in all structures that were already up. And I think one of those council members in responding, so what they wanted to do was they provided all of their ideas and what they would like to see the code changed to, to staff, and we took those and compiled this together. And so one of those council members probably remembered them saying that and said, we don't want to do that. Don't do that. I don't want that to be done, so don't do it.
I don't want to get involved with it either.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm just saying, it's curious.
I just want to say, that can't be done. You can't grandfather in unpermitted. I mean, grandfathering is a word, the real term is non-conforming. It's a non-conforming building. If it was... If it doesn't conform with the current code, then it's non-conforming. If it's legally non-conforming, meaning that it was permitted at the time, then it can be allowed to continue, i.e. grandfathered. If it's an illegal, non-conforming use, that it was illegal when it was built, then it cannot be, then it's an illegal, non-conforming use, and it cannot be grandfathered in.
Correct.
I mean, it just can't be done.
No, and we know it can't, but it always comes up as something somebody's interested in. It always comes up, and we always have to explain it can't be done.
The only thing that the council could really do about that is just say, well, you know, direct staff to just stop code enforcement. You know, just, you know, maybe eliminate all funding for code enforcement, you know, or something like that. I mean, that's really... And then, you know, then what is the point of the Planning Commission or, you know, I mean, the city council? Cities are required to have a planning commission, but they can act as the planning commission if they want to. You know, I'm just saying.
Which is why I said, they should use you for the reason that you're here. You're the buffer. They should use the buffer to say, look, we have codes, we have city norms. This group sees that those norms are, when questioned, handle those questions and enforce those norms. You're asking us to overturn what they've so diligently looked at, and we're not going to do it. If I were on the council, that's how I would address it. Whether it was my brother, my mother, my friend, my enemy, I would treat them all the same and, you know, be consistent.
We have two more to get through.
Yeah, other ideas. Structures shall have a cover down the front for screening purposes, so right now, under the current code, it's optional. If they do get the screen down the front, it has to be from the manufacturer, not a tarp they got at Home Depot. But this council member thought it would be a good idea that they all have a cover down the front. And then some other available ideas, that the structure be open on two, three, or four sides. Some options available for these types of structures, they have the metal that comes down the side, and you can get it a quarter way, you can get it halfway, you can get it solid down both sides, front and back. So depending what the Planning Commission wants, maybe you want to require some of the sides to be open. And then in our accessory structures section, where it's for garages and patios and those sorts of things, there is a size requirement. If it's larger than 450 square feet, it needs to come for review in front of the Planning Commission. Currently, the carport structures do not have that size requirement. So even if they, you know, they're 10 feet wide and 45 feet long is 450 feet, Planning Commission could say, if you want something larger than that, you have to come before Planning Commission for review.
I would like to say, I really like that last bullet point, larger than 450 square feet. And then I also like the point about the cover, because that's just being a good neighbor.
Which one? Down the front?
Yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six, the seventh, I like the seventh and ninth bullet points.
Structures shall have a cover down the front for screening purposes.
Correct.
And structures larger than 450 square feet must be approved by Planning Commission.
Here's why, to my fellow commissioner, staff, can you pull up the exhibit that shows the beautiful tarp that the people purchased from Harbor Freight on Exhibit D?
Oh, that is over here.
The gray one?
Yeah.
I don't seem, I don't mind the one beneath it, though. I don't mind it not having a cover. The gate goes up six feet.
So then maybe we qualify it and say, if a cover is going to be used on the front, it has to come from the manufacturer, not something you purchase at Harbor Freight.
I think that is already in there.
It's already in there.
Yeah.
May I ask a question of council?
No.
Mike, if you cover four sides of a RV shed, is it a building?
Yes, it's considered a garage or a building, so a carport, by definition, needs to be open on two sides.
Okay, and if you put a cover in front, does it have to be fire-resistant?
That, if it doesn't, if it's not close to the property line, no, but I don't know what it... You'd have to define a cover, because, you know, you're thinking tarp is one way, but someone could say a cover is a wall or a garage door.
Right. But if you're, if you cover four sides with material on front or back, whatever you want to call it, then it becomes a building, and then that material needs to be fire-resistant, not what you're seeing up here now, which is, looks like a tarp you get at Costco or something.
If it's closer than five feet to the property lines, yeah.
Yeah, which...
Shade clothing is an exception to that?
As a citizen, I don't want them covering it up. I want to see that RV in there and not somebody's office, not somebody's daycare center that, you know, these things could be used for, nobody knows, because they're behind a fence, and then they're covered up like this. I, that's up to you, but that's just my thought.
That's why I was saying that if we qualify it and say, don't say that a shade of cover is required. What I'm saying is that if they decide to put a cover on the front, it has to be a cover that comes from the manufacturer, not a tarp that they buy at Harbor Freight. Which is what we have here.
Yeah, that's what we have.
Okay.
I have a question for staff. Under accessory buildings, it references a height of no more than 15 feet. So one of the requirements from the council was limiting the length to 45 feet and the height of 15. So currently, we don't have a height limit on, I'm thinking we might want to have one.
And 15 feet is what's in accessory buildings, but we had also called down to the RV auto referral place and basically asked, what's the tallest RV you have? And I believe at the time, he said it was like 14 and a half feet tall. And so it was like right under 15, where 15 seemed to be appropriate. Nobody's much taller than that unless they're like adding a bunch of stuff on the top.
You're talking about the RV or the RV cover?
On RVs.
An RV?
On RVs, and so that gives them a good, you know, six, eight inches, where 15 feet should be sufficient.
The maximum allowable height on an RV is 14 feet. That's why I've always requested the city to trim the trees 14 feet tall, 12 feet from the center, or have a 12-foot section in the middle of the street to accommodate, you know, whether it's a motorhome or a fifth wheel.
Now, if the RV cover has got a pitched roof...
You go to the peak.
That's the 15?
Yeah.
Right now, it's not a requirement.
Right now, it's not in there that it stays 15 feet or below.
I would like to see that in there.
That makes sense to me.
And you do see that there are, you know, that are way taller than that, and we kind of like, what did they, what did they put in there that's tall?
Okay.
Well, this one on...
I think some of them just feel like, oh, it matches better with the house. I have a two-story house. Let's make it 30 feet tall.
So limit the height to 15 feet or less. Got it? Anything else?
We want to limit the length of the structure, because it's not in there either. Apparently, it's not.
The, correct, the length or the width is not limited, and the square footage is not limited, before it would need to come to Planning Commission for review.
Kurt, what's the longest RV that's available on the road?
Longest I've seen is 44, but you can tow things behind it. I would go back to the Flammings. They needed a conditional use permit for theirs because it was longer than, was it 400? It was obviously bigger than 450 square feet. They got within three feet of the house, but because of the length, they needed a conditional use.
They were evaluated under this section, seventeen-twelve-ten, which says if your structure is over 450 square feet, you need Planning Commission approval.
Right, okay.
Right.
Yeah, and that structure needed to be five feet from the house. And they were looking for, in their variance, to be able to get within three feet to locate that on their property.
Well, unlike other government bodies within this city of Escalon, my suggestion would be that we grab this section from accessory buildings and be consistent with this section and apply the same to the carport section. That way, there is consistency within the municipal code when it comes to height and length, et cetera, et cetera. Those are just my thoughts. That way, it's consistent.
Those would be... Did you like that if it's over 450 square feet, it comes to the Planning Commission for review?
Yes. And because we don't, because the last thing we want to do is be inconsistent from this section to the accessory, or to the carport section, and then some bozo decides that they're going to submit a variance request because they're applying the rules of the carport section, or the accessory buildings section to the carport section. You know, we're trying to eliminate that loophole just so that we're consistent the whole way through, so.
I think that comes back to, I can't remember, Ingle Sarkozy? Well, I'm going to call it a patio. I'm going to put it on the side, and I'm going to call it a patio.
Well, it does seem like there was a lot of work that could have just been combined by having a subsection under accessory buildings relate to carports and these covers, rather than have two separate subsections.
And that's...
Not a building. That's the point.
It's an accessory building, as we were confirmed by the building official, right?
When you're looking at ADUs, you're looking at a dwelling. This isn't a dwelling. If it's, as I was trying to refer to Mike here, if it's covered on four sides, then it does become a building. And at that point, it has to meet building standards.
Well, that, so then we would need to remove freestanding patio cover out of accessory buildings.
That's your choice.
Obviously, that's kind of nonsense, so. There's rules for each individual item. If it does have more than one side, then there's rules that apply. If it has two or more, there's rules that apply. I'm just making a comment that it seems like it could have been stuck under this with a few less items to negotiate and just been covered under one section and just created some more clarity under accessory. My fear is that we've been here now for almost three hours reviewing this, and it's going to go to the city council, and they're going to say, thanks for your time, but we're going to do it our way.
Yeah, but we're just advising them with this.
I know. We're just advisors.
It's... Setbacks are going to eliminate 90% of all of these structures going up in the future. And from what I'm hearing, there's nothing we can do about it, and nothing the city council can do about it.
Any other thoughts before we move on from residential?
Anne, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Well, I just wanted to clarify a little bit what you just said. It doesn't... With these regulations, it doesn't mean that all those buildings are going to have to come down. I mean, because we have a complaint-driven system. So it would only become an issue if somebody complains about it. And then, you know, if the, you know, I suppose the council could just say, you know, if it comes, if it comes to them, they could just say, well, you know, they could just vote to direct staff... we're, you know, they could just vote to direct staff to just not, not enforce the, the, you know, the, the violation. And then, then the property owners, the neighbor, whoever is complaining would just be all, they, they, the only thing they could do is sue under a private nuisance theory. And they would probably win, because it's, it's not compliant with the building code. But they would have to do that at their own expense. So... Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm just saying, it, we, your statement that all these buildings would have to come back, come down, that would only be the case if there were complaints against all of them and, and the staff was permitted to do their jobs.
I think that's a very good point, is that we're not, we're not here to tell our constituents that you gotta take them all down. All we're trying to say is, we're, all we're trying to do is set a precedent and municipal moving forward.
You're just trying to, you know, maintain some standards that are consistent with the building code and that create, you know, some, you know, the aesthetic look that the city is, you know, purportedly wanting to have.
Thank you, Ann. Okay, moving forward to commercial carports. Like I said, we are getting an increased interest and activity in commercial businesses wanting to put in these carports in their parking lots. Most of the time, they're for solar. And then Exhibit E has some pictures of solar carports and the carports that are here in town. This is the one that the city put up right back here behind City Hall and the police department. They have different styles. This one has one post and then kind of cantilevers off of that. There's another style that has a post in the front, a post in the back. There's another picture of that one. Most of the ones that I have seen have the, the single post. And they all pretty much look the same, I think. So...
They all come from China.
What staff is looking for tonight is these, these carports that are going in commercial parking lots. What are your thoughts on rules for them? Do you, do you want to allow them in parking lots? With solar, without solar? Do you want to see them? Do you want to just set guidelines and then staff evaluates them to the guidelines through the building permit process? Do you think they need use permits?
The ones that are there now didn't come to us, so somebody approved them. Somebody evaluated them, so can it stay the same? Was that staff that decided?
It went through planning.
Okay, and so we're not needed.
Well, there, there are...
They're becoming a lot more popular, and they all came within, what is?
Two months of each other, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they were all really boom, boom, boom.
So there's details that go along with them.
What I noticed is that, you know, on, on, in residences, we're requiring that carports, RV covers try to tie in aesthetically, color-wise and material-wise. And these, like the, the steel is silver, or, or the poles are brown, or the, you know, there's no attempt to tie the steel structure in with a brick building or whatever. And then I don't have a problem with that. But also, I, I'm wondering about, could something like that be over playground equipment? To not only provide solar, but to provide shade, so the equipment doesn't get too hot for the kids to use. And we've got several parks in town that, that could benefit from that. But, yeah, I don't, I don't know how much we need to hear of those things if, if we haven't heard about them before.
And that's direction that we're looking for. If planning commission, and you've seen the pictures that we've included, you've probably seen them in stores that you go to. If you're not too concerned about them.
Well, at, over up or town, at up or town and at the high school.
I think the schools installed them.
Doesn't Dent have it too?
No.
No.
So if, if, if planning commission's not concerned about the size, materials, colors, lighting, number of structures, if...
What do you think?
I mean, I certainly like what's out there already, so if we stay with that standard, if that's what your standard is, I don't see the need for it to come to planning commission.
As staff, we've, we've tried to say, find a way to say yes to them as long as they're not affecting parking, circulation, handicap access, access, all those...
Visibility.
Major visibility issues, because we know that technology-wise, solar is, is where to go. But all of the commercial buildings push for the solar on, on, and combined covered parking. They don't want to put them on the actual buildings. And so we're seeing more of the parking structure and that's, we got the first one. Oh, this isn't a big deal, but yeah, one, one goes up, everybody sees it, oh, let's go do that. And then boom, 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 we get three or four more. And then the city jumps in, jumps on the boat and does the same thing, yeah. And so we started becoming concerned because they're coming more popular. Our commercial areas are more condensed, where, you know, you're downtown, you're in the main street area, all those buildings are closer. I know planning commission in the past has identified, you know, or, or has acknowledged and, and received feedback from the community on like the lack of parking and such. And so those types of structures may tend to make people feel like there is less stuff, which is not taking away from parking, but it does kind of tighten everything up. Confine it to an extent. But we've been very careful on not having it go that way. We run everything through the city engineer and make sure that, you know, we're not creating an issue when we're allowing it either. So, but all of them, we haven't had any issues so far that we're aware of, so.
Well, if the city council doesn't like what's going on, they would probably direct staff to send something to us. And if, my feeling is, if it's not broke, don't fix it.
So then we might bring back some amendments to the list of permitted uses under other that redefines parking structures as more of parking garages. And then, you know, parking shade canopies permitted. And then they'll submit for building permit review. We'll continue reviewing for the, the safety concerns that we've been looking for. And then if you see anything that poses a problem, do bring it up to us.
What do you think on this side?
I don't know if we're gonna, you want to use the term parking garage. I mean, because, I mean, there isn't one in the city.
There's not one.
No, no, I think what you meant is, is currently this, the definition we have under the permitted uses, parking structures, and it refers to like garages, so implementing an actual shade structures or solar shade structures into that.
Change some terms.
Yeah, just making an update to it.
I'm a big proponent of solar and, I mean, I've seen them pop up throughout town.
Do you feel the need to give input when one is?
Absolutely not. I, I, I look and I think, man, somebody's saving money there.
And that's why we were trying to move forward with them, because we know what the intent is. The intent is energy efficiency, trying to get those bills down. Cost savings, and so we're, we're not wanting to say, no, you can't have that because it's in your parking lot.
Fact, I...
Even though it's accessory structure to your building, so.
No, this, this could kind of play into Mr. Sarkozy, no, Mr. Strohman talking about the Teslas running out of juice. You put a parking structure with some solar on it, you get the plug-in chargers, let the sun do that.
And candidly, Chair, I, I love them so much, I wish that they would actually become part of the building code. I mean, they, think about the ones at the community center. They're, they're covered now, so not only are they generating money and income and revenue for the city, but your car is not out there baking while you're attending Little Johnny's soccer game. I mean, it's a win-win, in my opinion.
That proposal for a senior facility on First Street that didn't go into the Clessen property, was, were they gonna have solar over the carports? Do I remember that correctly?
I believe so.
No? And that's a residential, that wouldn't be a commercial.
Well, now, in the new building code, all residential, it doesn't matter if it's single family or multifamily, you need to have solar, so.
Like a three, three-point something kilowatt system.
It's a percentage of your use.
Like almost 30, 33%, I think, a third of your energy, yeah.
Can I go ask a couple of questions on a couple of pictures? Exhibit E. For, it's the, the one, the picture that's right after the structure in the backyard here, City Hall, looks like a apartment or, you know, residential area, yeah, right there.
This one?
That one, and then also the picture right after that and the one after that. Especially that one, right there, the...
At the library?
Yeah, so... You mentioned a little bit ago, a few minutes ago, about what this structure would be called. And to me, that looks a lot closer than five feet from the building, that structure, especially the top of the overhang. And it just brings me back to what we were just talking about. You know, are we gonna require separation from a building in these cases? How does the building code apply to this over, overhang in this case? And maybe even the residential ones in the previous pictures?
Mike, I'll defer that question to you.
I'd have to look, because these are just, there's no walls involved, it's just, it's just a cover. So I'd have to see what the definition is on that as far as a fire separation between an actual structure and these covers. So, yeah, I'd have to look into that one for you.
And actually, that one before is, is commercial as well. It looks residential, but it's that Dairy Services Building.
Ah, gotcha.
You know, I am noticing, the, the ones at the community center are angled away from the building toward the sidewalk, whereas the one at the library is angled down, so if you walk behind your vehicle, you're gonna get dripped on if it's raining or whatever.
It all has to do with the direction of the sun.
Yeah.
Well, but this, they're facing, I mean, this, they're both running north to south.
Yeah, but when you do solar, you always want the solar panels to be facing south. You get the most consistency.
But they're not. This one's facing east, just like the one at the libraries.
This one faces south. That's Arthur Road.
Facing west. I wonder if that, maybe the elevation of the building, the library, has affected that.
Now, the one at the library is south too, right?
Since there's not a wall on that structure, it doesn't sound like the setback applies. So would that be the same for these freestanding car, carports on the people's sides, of, the side of people's homes? If they decided at some point, I don't want sides, I'm just putting a top on there, I'm going 15 feet, and does that make that acceptable?
Mike, I'll defer that to you.
I'd have to look at that closer if just a roof structure makes a difference versus having actual walls.
While we're doing that, can we look at what the definition of a wall is? I noticed that some of those structures didn't come all the way down to the ground. So if it was just a portion of the roof, like a gramble roof, where it would just come down the sides, would, is there a definition on, on how far off the ground or how, how far below the roof that's to be?
Yeah, I'd have to look at that, too. I don't think there's a particular, how much of a wall is covered, or, as like a carport, open on two sides, what's the definition of open? I don't know if that, it's that clear in the code.
Okay, thank you.
We'd have to get a little detailed.
Before we move off this topic, I would like to say thank you to city staff and to former city manager Tammy Alcantor for taking the leap on bringing the solar into city facilities, because it's, if you don't have solar already, let's talk.
Did the city permit those, did they go through the permitting process?
They did.
So they were reviewed by the building official?
Yes.
They must have met whatever requirements there were of the IBC and the IFC.
Yes, we have our plan review staff that's, I have to say, more up on the codes as far as what is compliant. So I didn't personally review these. We used our CSG staff for that.
All right, if there's no other thoughts on commercial carports, I think we're ready for the next item.
Do we need to vote on a previous item?
Oh, they vote that those are their recommendations to city council?
Is it, when's it gonna go to them? I'd be, I, I don't want to vote on something that I don't have in black and white in front of me.
If you want them to, to come back updated, then we would need to bring them to your next meeting.
Redlined versions.
Well, which will post, postpone them a month.
Or if we don't decide to go that route, will it go to their next meeting?
We go there, we're shooting for their next meeting because they, they're, they're wanting it right of way. So we're trying to move it as quickly as we can. That and it, and every, and the processes for these are frozen right now, and so we want to, and it takes 30 days after you adopt it to go into effect, and so we're trying to get that clock going so that we're not, not dropping the ball. So we were shooting for Monday night's meeting, but if you're not comfortable with that...
I, I feel good, I guess, about all that we discussed and decided upon. That'd be fine. The rest of you, too?
Well, I mean, I've, I'm a little less, a little less comfortable. I mean, I think there's a lot we discussed, and it sounds like maybe Mike has some, a little bit more research to do on some, some things that are right in the wheelhouse of what the city council is asking.
And the guy, the guy, we've, the guy's gotten a stay, in essence, on, on his, his project as far as code enforcement. But he probably doesn't want to just sit there and wait too long. I mean, has he ordered materials to do what he wants to do?
He was already up.
Oh, it's already up.
It's there. We had provided a code enforcement notice that provided him options either to apply for a variance, adjust it to meet code requirements, or remove it completely.
What's the setback on it? Sorry.
Zero.
Zero.
So, I mean...
Zero house, zero fence. And it's, it's attached to the fence, essentially.
So as is, it needs to come down.
It doesn't meet building code.
Yeah.
And as approved.
What are we talking about?
So if you wanted to wait to hear what comes of the research from the building official and if you want staff to incorporate the comments from the discussion tonight into a redline version of the code and bring that back before you, you would continue this item to the next meeting.
I don't want to be rushed, and it doesn't sound like if we delay, that he's affected, really.
No.
I like waiting. You guys like waiting?
I make a motion to continue the item until the last, next meeting, until we receive further documentation from the building official and redline comments from city staff.
To the December 14th meeting.
To the December 14th meeting. That's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
All right, motion made in second. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll look at the revised version on the 14th of December, and then we could get it to city council after that.
Commissioner Sarkozy saying, when is Commissioner Strowman gonna go on another business trip anymore? Take it away, staff.
Item number three.
Okay, what, are we on to administrative matters?
Yes.
Discussion on...
I guess, is it too late to close the public hearing on the last one?
I close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your contribution. Discussion on Escalon Municipal Code 17.14.040, Harwin Low Density Residential, District Development Standards, Minimum Lot Area and Side Yard Setbacks. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, these ideas with the R one, single-family residential district, and all of the items that we discussed tonight, and, and other things that have come up as well, it's been kicking around the planning department for a while, that, that six thousand square foot lots in the R one zone might just be too small for what people are wanting to do, they don't have space to store their RV on the side yard, they're needing to park it in the street, or park it in the driveway. There, people are wanting to put up patio covers, and they just don't have enough space in the rear yard to put up a decent-sized patio cover, that they're needing to come to planning commission for variance, for reduced setbacks to fit it. So, we thought, in, in light of our last item, now might be a good time to talk about those design standards in the R one district, and see if some adjustments need to be made before new housing starts to, you know, new subdivisions are creating a lot, if they create lots, what development standards might apply to them. So, attached is the municipal code section for development standards in the, the single-family zone. We're, we're welcome to talk about any of the items in here, but the items that planning staff thought should be looked at is minimum lot area, six thousand square feet for an interior lot, seven thousand for a corner lot, and then also some of the setbacks, specifically in relation to the side property line, and maybe the rear lot, because people are having trouble fitting those patio covers in. So, just opening that up, if planning commission has any thoughts or opinions on increasing the size of lots, or, or increasing the setbacks for houses in the single-family zone.
Let me just ask a general question first, wasn't there something that just passed in California, lifting restrictions on, on development in R one zonings where you can put multiple units on lots? And if we increase the size of the lots, is that going to also potentially lead to more units on those bigger lots than what we intended to do? That, I'm just, I'm just throwing that one out there.
And then, and then possibly no and no, because we do have a lot of lots in town that are, that are larger than the six thousand square feet, it's more of the newer developments that are down to that six thousand square feet, mostly Westwood Country, or this area have the, have the smaller lots, and so, yeah, those ones are already kind of established, where most of them are not going to be able to put an ADU back there, because they can't, they just can't fit it.
But if the lots are bigger, then that's gonna happen, then, then...
If the lots are bigger, they, there is the potential for them to, to create those, and the, the standards for ADUs, yeah, are, are minimal at, at state standard right now as well. And so, yeah, I guess that would play into that to the extent, for, for staff ourselves, we were looking at that, because we see the issues going on with the RVs and these other structures they want on the side yards, and we're thinking, you know, wouldn't it be nice to be able to require a ten-foot minimum side yard on some of these houses, so that people can park their stuff off of the street? And so, that would be more supportive in that fashion, but yeah, it would open that door, which SB nine was the item that allows up to four units to be put on one lot, I do know that it's, there has been like a lawsuit filed, and it's gonna take a while for all of that to hash out, and so we're not sure where that's gonna land, but, but yeah, potentially it would.
I mean, I, I'm in favor of bigger lots, I, I would much prefer having bigger lots, but what we're talking about is contrary to what I'm seeing out there in the world, you know, everything is getting compressed, now trying to build...
And it is, the, the state of California wants our lot sizes to get smaller, they want us to build closer and closer together, the, the idea is more housing, more housing, more housing.
Yep.
So let's shrink the space between everything, and build up, not out.
Yeah.
But, in, in our dealings with residents and stuff, that's one of the bigger things, is upsizing the house, upsizing the yard, upsizing, looking for, wanting to stay in town, wanting a bigger house, wanting a bigger yard, but not being able to find that in town, and so we're putting that out there.
We want our toys.
Yeah, yeah.
And we have to put them somewhere.
Yeah, but, I mean, kind of, what...
So for people like us, it pushes us out of town, because, yeah, we need the space.
We'll go live in the country.
We like our toys, we move into the country, so we can have...
But you made a choice to live out in the country, and I think that's, don't get me wrong, I think I would agree with Commissioner Castellanos, that, yeah, bigger lots would be great, but you're also opening up this other can of worms, now you're adding potential units on a lot, so what, kind of what was mentioned with the canopies, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. That's my, those are just my thoughts, I'm just one of five.
And that, and that's fine, that's exactly what we came for, is just feedback, to find out whether that's something you would be interested in, because, as you know, we're moving forward, we're trying to get our municipal services review completed, and so the, one of the first properties that we'd be working on annexing into the city at that point, is going to be the eighteen-acre property over here off Brennan and Highway one twenty, headed towards Manteca on the south side of Yosemite, and they're looking at approximately seventy-five homes, and so we're thinking, well, shoot, this is gonna be the first subdivision that we've built here in seven, in, in several years. Westwood Country, when we had to actually look back on that, I mean, that, that housing development was approved back in the seventies, and is just finishing this year. And so that's how long it's taken, and so these seventy-five houses, we're thinking, well, what if we, if we change the standards, we would get maybe some additional space, and people would be able to add, add things in.
We have a requirement for annexation for city property to be at least on two sides of the property to be annexed? I mean, isn't that only gonna be on one side, one side of...
It's on the side of town that has infrastructure, are you talking about, is that what you're talking about?
But it's only gonna butt Escalon in, on one, like on Brennan?
Right now, it's surrounded on three sides by city proper, in city limits, there's like a cutout right there.
Okay.
After the Belatera area.
Is there an existing minimum?
The minimum's six thousand, yeah.
How many square feet do you have?
And that's about average, and, and like, and like what's been mentioned in the past, a lot of cities have downsized that, we're seeing a lot of developments in other cities with like the three-foot side yards, three-foot rear, and that's a big no-no for us, we wouldn't feel comfortable doing that, and we would probably tell you, we don't want you to do that if it came to you, but we realize that that's how a lot of people are living, they're not, they're not wanting the yard, they're not wanting the maintenance, and I think that works really, really well for things like senior housing and those type of things, not necessarily housing, housing.
Well, and, I, without sounding like an egotistical jerk, if that's what you want, that's perfectly fine, but then you can move somewhere else, don't move in Escalon, I mean...
Let me violate procedure, Kurt, weren't we at eight thousand square feet, weren't we at eight thousand square feet not that long ago?
I thought it was seven. I'm, I'm not sure.
I thought it was seven thousand square feet.
Seven thousand.
So it was seventy-two Y five hundred.
On, on a regular residential lot. I would, I would ask staff to, if you had prepared that letter for the council regarding SB ninety-five?
We have a letter that we did a few months ago, that we're gonna use as a template, and so it shouldn't be too far off, and that will be on Monday night's meeting as well.
And what was that gonna state as far as the council's thinking?
The letter in opposition spoke specifically to removing local control, and that's, that's the big ticket when it comes to cities regarding SB nine, is that we aren't a one-size-fit-all, you're, you're taking regulation and applying it statewide, and we're a little Escalon, we're not San Francisco Bay Area, we're not, we don't, we don't have, you know, high-tech transportation services, we don't have a lot of resources in town, and you're applying this thing that would fit really, really well in these huge cities that have lots of people, lots of means to get around, and making us have to do it in our town, and we don't like that approach, so it's, it's gonna be more focused on local control, we should have our right to implement the policies that we feel are best for our community, because this is our community, you have no idea how this community is.
Well, can't we do what Oroville did, and become an independent community? No?
Sure.
Inde, what is it, independent republic?
You're the state of Jefferson or something.
Build the wall!
No.
I saw that, I don't think it has any legal, it, it won't hold up, but it was a good, it was a good thought.
I have to look at that.
Then the dam broke.
Oh, yeah.
Then they can't call him for money.
They can be, they're a republic, they succeeded from the state, yeah.
That's right, you told me about that.
Can we include a requirement to be exempt from any future housing elements that the state may require?
It sounds like leave lot sizes setbacks alone.
And this is minimum, and so somebody can always come and say they want to be, build bigger, and, and...
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Have we seen initial plans for the development, do we have an idea of what they'd like to do?
Not at this time, it's, it's, it was actually supposed to move forward back in two thousand and seven, and because of the sewer constraints that the city had, it was put on hold, and we have this moratorium in place on the sewer, and they've actually been waiting this long, and so we're finally, over the last several years, addressing those issues, getting, we had our rates increased to be able to, to address those sewer issues, and we're moving forward, and so they're finally gonna be able to move forward, it's not the same developer it was back then, it's changed a few different times, but they're, they are eager to begin, you know, right off of being annexed, the property being annexed moving forward, so, and it, and it's possible it could have changed, the last time we talked about the number of housing units, it's, it's been at least a year since then, and so things have changed, but they have an idea of what we wanted, when we had last talked to them, and that hasn't changed, so.
And this is the property west of Brennan and south of one twenty, where they just tore down the trees in the last six months or so?
It is across the street from the strawberry stand, so the strawberry stands on the north side of one twenty, on the south side of one twenty.
But not where the car lab kennels were?
Yeah.
It's on the other side of Brennan?
No, I think that's...
It's on the east side of Brennan.
Oh, okay, where the cows are in the...
Yeah.
The cows, yes, I should have remembered that, there's cows there.
Used to be a dog kennel there.
Yeah, car lab kennel, yeah.
Yeah, it was the car property.
There was a lot of succulents, or something being grown there, yeah.
It was still east of Brennan?
You know, they do that, then they're gonna, then they're gonna have to put the, the light at Brennan and one twenty.
Yeah.
Because that was a big issue with, that guy wanted to put the high-density stuff in, remember that?
And I think that's something that, that we're wanting to see that project move forward as well, because the city wants that signal put in there, and we think that this project moving forward should, should get us that signal, hopefully, so, and we'll, that will all move forward when they start doing their studies and stuff.
Especially with everything west of McHenry goes to Van Allen now, you know?
And that would be up to a forest up like that.
I remember when I used to attend the cog, Estee cog meetings, and they talked about wanting everybody to live in town, and they were trying to discourage ranchettes being built, and people being outside of town, because you had to use the transportation and the hub of the community, and it just, it went against the grain for me, I couldn't go, I stopped going, but, yeah, let's do our thing, and, so it's, it's not Ramus, is it?
No, it isn't.
No. They wanted to be out by the, where the park was gonna be.
We've talked to them in the past, but no, yeah, it's not them at this point.
Okay, so what did we decide then on the development standards?
Not a...
Not a change?
Not a change. I would, I would propose larger lots.
So an item that, that's not listed on here, that I remembered now when I was reading this item, is that our R one requirements just require two, two covered parking spaces, it doesn't specifically ask for a garage, and so, building new, the city doesn't require you to actually construct a garage, and so, is that something that the planning commission would be interested in updating? Because technically, right now, the way the code is written, if somebody didn't want to build a garage, we cannot make them build a garage, so they can build a house, and then install a two-car covered parking stall, which would be...
Carport.
A carport. And most cities require a two-car garage, actual garage, when they're building, and a lot of them are seeing have the three-car, and we see over the years, it doesn't seem to, to be as many garages you have, we're not parking in garages, but at least they're being used for storage, right?
My husband wanted a twenty-seven car garage, he had to settle for two.
My two. And so is that something that, that you wanted to see move forward, and, and, and maybe we update, is that we actually require garages?
We like garages.
I think that makes sense.
We all like garages.
Yeah, and that's something, we, we talked about it, and somehow we missed it, and then I'm thinking, oh, the garage, we gotta require a garage.
With all the progress we've made tonight on the standards, if we decide not to have a garage, we're sliding back in our standards, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, all right, so we'll, we'll get that moving forward, and I think that's great to have in place, in case we have subdivisions that want to move forward that don't want to put garages, if you don't have garages, you're parking in the driveway, or you're parking in the street, for the most part.
What's the average lot size at, at country, what estate?
Six thousand.
Six thousand.
Most of them are six thousand, there's a few that, maybe a handful in the whole subdivision that get to the seventy-five maybe, and then...
And we're saying six thousand is the minimum that we...
Yeah, and for the most part, a lot of your developers are gonna build a minimum, because they're maximizing the number of houses they can build.
Is it, would it make sense, we say two-car garage, but does it make sense to consider at least a one-car garage, you know, if the, you know, a senior houser, senior housing comes up, and, you know, maybe we just have a single-car garage?
So this would apply to, you know, anybody pulling a house permit, which, I mean, in the most case, you're, most people want a garage, and so they add on the garage, as far as projects like that, if they're on a, a piece of land that's residential and more than one acre, they would come to planning commission and council for a planned development anyhow, and so you could require them to have garages if they needed to, or say, be open to not having garages if they didn't want to, like the senior project that ended moving forward, that was gonna be over at the Clessens lot on First Street, they were proposing some units with no garages, and some units with one-car garages, and if it was approved that way, we would let it move forward that way. You always have the discretion to require less, it's a little bit harder to require more.
So a thought I had when I was looking over the thing, I know of two residences, they face one street, and then the, they're on a corner lot, so their driveway comes off the side, and in the driveway, on the outside of their fence, is a shed, whether it be, you know, a manufactured shed, or a homemade shed, or whatever, so it's on the outside, and then because there's a slope to the driveway, they've got to use pieces of wood to, to level it, it's very unsightly, and I, you know, they want us to see the unsightly, and so they don't have to see it in their own backyard, but there are at least two situations in town, so do we, I mean, we have things in place to prevent that.
We'd like to submit a code enforcement complaint, and then we can go investigate it. Corner lots have side yard setbacks, so it might not meet side yard setbacks, but it depends on the size, because sheds less than, hundred and twenty square feet, less than nine feet tall, don't have setbacks.
But they put them behind the fence at least, I don't want to look at them.
What were you saying, that our corner lots do not have side yard setbacks?
Corner lots do have side yard setbacks, that are more, more restricted than interior lots, yeah.
And then they have that traffic area.
Is that a nice sort of answer?
So they have it out on the side of their corner lot, it might not have setbacks.
I'm more worried about people coming down reasonably really fast and making a left or a right turn on Vallepania.
Okay, so, matters presented from the audience?
He's still here.
There's more? There's more?
Now, real quick so we can get out of here.
I know.
One of my pet peeves about this process that you started going through tonight are landscape lighting districts, and people, property owners, that when they purchased those properties, had to sign and agree to the codes, conditions, and resolutions here. And I may be the only one in Belatera that actually has a copy of it, but I wanted to read just one section on temporary buildings that everybody in my district is subject to. And the only way you can enforce it is if you want to hire a lawyer, and I, I've contacted the lawyers that wrote this up, they don't even remember it, but they're perfectly willing to take a retainer and, and file any kind of injunctions we want against any property owner there if we want to pursue it, so.
Is this CCRs?
Yeah.
Are these CCRs you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and so, what's apropos tonight is the temporary building, and I'll just read you real quick. It says, "No outbuilding tent, privy shack, shed, or other temporary building or improvement of any kind shall be placed upon any portion of the property, either temporary or permanently." So, if, if like the city council says, screw your CCRs, we're gonna allow those structures there, then that person that puts it on there can actually be sued to remove it, which creates a conflict of interest, and of course, the city is not responsible for enforcing CCRs, but it puts that person, that applicant, at legal risk for violating these type of things. And this isn't the only, I think all four LLDs had CCRs originally. I don't know if anybody remembers them, but this is what I would use on my neighbor if he went to attempt something like that. And I don't, I don't think the silly, city should willfully violate CCRs that homeowners and property owners were required to sign and adhere to. Of course, people have one hundred and twenty-foot sheds in there, you know, technically a violation, but I, I think on a larger scale, it was meant to limit these ISORS and things like that out there. And the nuisance section right underneath it is almost verbatim what the city has, and it's seventeen point fourteen under nuisances. So, they're, they're very closely related. I think they use some of the city verbiage to be included in here. And so, when you're thinking about these things and you're, you're doing the right thing, I think you're protecting the homeowners that had to sign these things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
On, on page seven, when, with what the city council had proposed, include a way to require neighbors' agreement or acceptance of a proposed structure, that made me think of a CCR, because we have a neighbor who, I found out accidentally, that they were gonna do something, and I went and told them, it's not an RCCNR to do that. They said, well, I don't have a copy, you know, who, who's gonna enforce this? I, I don't know if they're gonna go ahead and do it or not, and I, I mean, I don't know if other neighbors will react, you know, but we'll find out.
Yeah, us too.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, staff communications, anything?
I have none.
Or former staff, should I see if Tammy wants to contribute anything?
Oh, it's updated. It's not really her, it's just our, it's just our...
It's this. Oh, okay, never mind, never mind.
We updated it, and then we couldn't get it to work, so we had to go back to the old song.
All right, commissioner communications. Steve, I'll start with you. Do you have anything to...
Orlando's?
Yeah, January.
So, Orlando's, there's a meeting scheduled between them, our staff and Caltr... Excuse me, I tried to make it up. Uh, thank you. And Caltrans, Caltrans is having some issues with their, bless you, started a trend there, with their turnouts for fuel trucks and deliveries and such, and so they're gonna be meeting, is it this week or next week?
I think it's next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
I think that's the issue that's been brought up, yeah.
Yeah. And so, they're...
Hammering out the details.
Hammering out, to see if they can move forward.
Okay.
So, that's where we're at right now.
Mark?
We're not, we're not the ones who...
Just, uh, uh, thank you for the presentation today. I know this was kind of contentious at times and different opinions. It will be interesting to see the, all the notes that are gonna be redlined and, and see where it goes with the city council. Thank you.
I, I have no comment.
Oh, is that all?
I, I saved my time.
Thanks, Jeremy.
You're welcome.
I just want to say thank you to the staff for putting together this documentation. Thank you to Mr. Danzinger for being here tonight and offering your true, honest opinion. My comments earlier, I hope they're not construed as disparaging to the city council because obviously we are advisors to the city council. However, I want to make sure that we are doing the best job that we possibly can as planning commissioners, and providing what we believe to be a good standard, not just having things be willy-nilly and just a free-for-all throughout the city limits. It's one of the most frustrating parts when I read this agenda. It was kind of like, well, didn't we already go through all of this already? So, again, I want to make sure that my comments aren't construed as being disparaging to any city council member in one in particular or as the whole body. So, only other thing is, on a personal note, I just want to thank everybody for, who responded to the scouting for food and to the recycling campaign with the Cub Scouts. Things are definitely rocking and rolling, and we appreciate the community's support. That's it.
Ditto on the appreciation for the staff, and thank you, Kurt. I, I just want to point out that Thursday Veterans Day, we've got a parade at ten-thirty. There's still time to get in the parade if you're interested. There's a luncheon at noon at the community center. I have tickets if anybody's interested. That's all.
And thank you to all the veterans out there. Without you guys, we wouldn't live in this great nation, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Meeting adjourned.
I might have muted you. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Ann.
You're welcome. Good night.
Good night. You're welcome. Good night.
Has a...